Let's move on to approval of the July fifteenth meeting agenda. Staff, anything to change?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one update for me tonight, that is to other business item eleven A, the voucher disbursement report. The council has emailed this report earlier today. There's also a printed copy if anyone would like to view it tonight, and so we're just adding that report to eleven A for this agenda.
Excellent. Council, anything that you'd like to add? Yes, Aaron?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm just getting my agenda up here. But I would like to make a motion to move old business up to after the consent agenda, just because my assumption is that most people are here to, from the public, that are here are going to want to speak on that item.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Okay, we will move old business up to or after the consent agenda and before presentations. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Pursuant to council rules, one motion, non-damatable, will approve the recommended, recommendation noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following the approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Staff, is there anything that needs to be moved? No. I know I would like to pull aside item C, donation from Jason Greenberg. Council, anything else that you'd like to set aside?
Hearing none, I move that we approve the balance of the consent agenda, items A through I, withholding item C.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, we will pull that. So what did we approve? We approved the city council meeting minutes from July first, 2025. We approved the city council work session meeting minutes from June tenth, 2025. We approved the second reading of an ordinance clarifying zoning text code pertaining to cannabis business zoning regulations. We approved the second reading of an ordinance amending the city charter. We approved the approval of licenses. We approved a road closure request. We approved Robinsdale's Wine and Spirits monthly financial statements, which are in great shape, and we approved the deputy registrar's monthly financial statements. Item C, so I wanted to pull, is there an explanation that's needed? No. Okay. I wanted to pull this item and, and just obviously, thanks, Jason, for the donation that you made to the city and the HRC, but also, I just, I want to acknowledge the good work that you do. And, you know, I was out over Wisbeng and I saw you everywhere. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that when we had that tragic incident at Sanborn, you called residents or you got residents together and you met with them. I just, I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And you're a great example of what civic engagement looks like, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Same. Shared sentiment. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the donation from Jason Greenberg.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay.
Abstain.
And Jason has to abstain because it's about him, he made the donation. So thank you again, Jason. All right, so we are going to move old business up here next before presentations, and that old business is the second reading of an ordinance related to camping on city property.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So I'll start with a brief introduction, give a bit of history, share some feedback that was requested by council, and then share some thoughts and conversations that I've been able to have, and then provide recommendations for next steps for your public feedback here tonight, since we, maybe this isn't a traditional old business item. The proposed ordinance was first discussed at a work session in late spring, following the first reading in June. For those not aware, the language became available following a U.S. Supreme Court decision, Grant Pass, Oregon versus Johnson et al. in 2024. Since that time, a number of cities have adopted same or similar language that is being proposed here tonight. Staff would again reiterate that the proposed ordinance is specific to camping on public property, something that I have shared in conversations that is in a similar vein. The city had prior ability to establish, for example, park hours. Code language allows us to say, except as otherwise provided, parks shall be closed between the hours of ten PM and six AM, and this expands a bit of that authority. The proposed language furthers no camping, again, in cities' critical infrastructure areas and other public facilities not deemed parks. As council expressed desire for additional community input, the item was shared on the city Facebook a handful of times, in the Birdtown Brief three times, posted in the Sun Post twice. Further, I've included written feedback from residents that shared directly with the city clerk or myself, these are in your packet, as well as from the Human Rights Commission as attachments to the item. I know the city council will share some of their interactions as we provide additional time that we traditionally do between a first and second reading, so certainly look forward to that, but do want to share, from my perspective, a bit of clarification in some of the time that I've since had, as well as other city staff. Do want to call out, included as a part of your item, some attachments. These include policy four twenty-eight of the Robinsdale Police Department, a memo from Chief Foley sharing some of the success stories that highlight current practices, and through our embedded social worker and other city staff, again, examples of success stories. Also attached are the emails of the aforementioned and the Human Rights Commission, and do want to call out, I've already given a direct feedback to the HRC about some of this, some of the rhetoric that was used, I do want to call out specifically. There was some assumptions of city staff acting with ill intent, certainly not the case. Want to make very clear that leading with compassion and empathy has long been the start of this conversation for the council and staff since we began this some months ago. There's been suggestion that it's a one or the other, that it's, you can either do the first or you can suppose, support the proposed language. These items are not mutually exclusive, both can happen at the same time. Council did ask about some quantitative information, including call volumes, whether the embedded social worker or the police department. Those numbers aren't things that exist, as being unhoused isn't a crime. When officers interact with unhoused individuals through our CAD system, we may include things like a welfare check and assist by police or otherwise. Calls can also range from non-emergency calls, nine-one-one calls, or offer initiated stops, so the CAD system will track that, but not the interaction with persons who might be unhoused at that time. RPD continues to utilize the embedded social worker, as they are the best person for resources, especially as a first-touch approach, to make available resources through other agencies. Primarily, these are Hennepin County and nonprofit organizations. Services offered are completely voluntary, so these may be stopped or declined at any time, and again, as one of your attachments, there's a screenshot of many of these resources that are made available on the city website that are commonly used. Most commonly, like to call streets to housing. This is an agency that doesn't track by cities, again, so no hard data specific to Robinsdale is available, rather they track by the county as a whole. Generally speaking, do want to again express that supporting this language does not support or does not recognize an opposition to those that might be unhoused, excuse me. I would highlight a recent, even celebrate, project that the city completed with MACV, the Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans, working with our regional, state, and federal partners. The property was ultimately purchased with county funds at approximately two million dollars. Following that, Representative Omar was able to secure seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars directed to MACV, and the city's role in this project was to work with all the agencies to coordinate that and continues to make sure that that project works. Ultimately, this creates a safe space for those that are unhoused in this particular situation for veterans. Councilmember Wagner and Prejean can speak to this as they were a part of that years-long process. Finally, a couple of examples that I wanted to mystify. The code is not intended to be punitive. The code is not hiring additional staff. Again, as we've discussed in our last couple of meetings, this is really intended to be a rule as we have these interactions. Going forward for procedures this evening, I would suggest that city council ask any immediate questions of staff that they might have at this time. Following, I would suggest you mirror your opportunity for public to address the city council matters not on the agenda. That's kind of the four-minute, fifteen-minute rule we often follow. I know the city clerk would make himself available for that thirty-second reminder as we sometimes ask him to do. Certainly, you can change these items, but the second part, I would also suggest you follow like we do for a public hearing. Take your feedback myself, and you can certainly take down notes or questions that you'd like answered, and we'd be happy to respond to all of those at the end, rather than make it conversational. So at this time, staff is happy to respond. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Council, any questions?
I could start.
Councilmember Prejean?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I am wondering if, since you provided comment to the HRC letter, and while we have a suggested time limit, I would love to give opportunity to the HRC to respond to that specifically, outside of anything else that they may have planned for the public hearing. Would the council be open to that?
Yeah, if that makes sense. So the...
So you're asking that they, there was a letter?
So what Tim had responded to, to the HRC's letter, giving some critical feedback, and I wanted to give if you want to take up on that option to respond to those statements outside of the time limit that we've set during the public hearing time.
I appreciate, this is my opinion, so, I appreciate that ask, and what I worry about is we've got a lot of people here who want to express their opinion, and so I would want to see it limited to four minutes, if we could, which I don't know if that's possible, but I'm open for other input. That's just mine, so, if the rest of the council wishes to move forward with that.
If I could clarify, I don't know if my ask was clear, that before we begin the public hearing, when we do have the, the time limits in place, that we allow before the public hearing starts for the HRC, if they choose to respond to Tim's comments that he just brought up in the background info.
Okay. I'm sensitive to everybody's time, but certainly appreciate that, so I hope that's clear. Council?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Council, Council Prejean, what I might suggest is, since this is not a typical public hearing, this is not a typical public feedback session. I did provide this feedback directly to the HRC members that submitted this on Friday to give them ample time. I would assume that it's tied into whatever feedback they're going to give you tonight, so I would not be concerned about it. If you like, maybe you invite them up first as a part of the proceedings to ensure that they, they have time.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, that looks familiar.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would, I'm hesitant to limit the entire comment period to fifteen minutes. I don't think we should necessarily set a time limit, because if you kind of do the quick math, you get four or so speakers if they decide to use the full four minutes. So I think I like the four-minute timeline, that seems like a reasonable ask, but I don't think we should cap the number of people. But of course, ask the public to stick to one statement and not come back a second and third time.
It's fine with me, yeah. I think there's a lot of people here who have something to say. Anybody opposed that?
No, I'm fine. We need to go over fifteen minutes.
Tim, what's best practice here? Should we set thirty? Should we say when it's done? What's the...
Mr. Mayor, Council, I think the room has a good sense of what you're looking for by way of feedback here tonight, if you limit individual to four minutes. If council at one point determines that they'd like to hold feedback for whatever reason, it could certainly be carried back at another time, but I think if it's the consensus of the council, we should just dive right in.
Great. One thing I just want to make clear is, we are going to do our best, because there are a lot of people here to limit you to four minutes. So Chase, you're going to hold up a red folder at thirty seconds, and then at four minutes, what happens? Streamers drop from the ceiling? Timer will go off. Great, all right, timer will go off, and then we're going to ask that you wrap up your comments immediately. Okay? All right. Well, then, Human Rights Commission, does somebody want to respond? Or do you have a question? Oh, sorry, yes. Oh, well, let's, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Wait, do we have...
Any questions still? Yeah.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Yeah. I do have one question, is to make sure we clarify this, is that our role, our, the ordinance is not to criminalize, and is really intentional to help support what we can be, what can be done, and people not be criminalized and/or subject, I know it's called out here in City Code, section one fifteen, that there is some type of monetary vagis attached to that, and just wanted to make sure that's very clear to people as well too, as we're talking about this.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Blackledge, if I may, a recent example I would give, Councilmember Wagner and yourself had reached out about an individual who was essentially lifting weights with some partners in their accessory unit, their garage, so to speak. A true read of code would indicate that conducting a business in your accessory dwelling unit would not be permitted, but through, through further investigation, staff was able to determine that that was not the case, that they were working out that where there was a potential code. I share this as an example, is that as written, it's intended to be a tool to, again, continue by leading with compassion and empathy and connect people with these other resources before that violation is considered violated.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, and this just actually sparked a different question I had, and then I promise we'll, we'll get to the, the public input, but, so luckily, over Wisbeng, Hennepin County Human Services had a booth at, on Broadway there at the Kids Fair, and I just want to confirm my understanding from what I've read from the materials, but then also my conversation with Hennepin County Human Services, is that when an embedded social worker is engaging with an unhoused individual, there's an intake process, and then RPD will assist with transporting that individual, correct? And it's not that they go to a, whatever shelter is closest, if it's closed, so be it, but they take them to someplace that's open and can receive them, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I think you bring up an excellent, excellent example, where the language is a bit vague in that it provides the opportunity to interpret the best services needed. Certainly, those experiencing homelessness, there's no one reason why a person may have gotten to that circumstance, there's no one set of resources to, to assist any person that is in that circumstance. So yes, it's absolutely right to say that there is a variety of ways to get people connected with those resources, both what they are and physically. PD often does help with transport and otherwise.
And there are services that are specific for youth, adults, food?
Youth, adults, food, mental health, substance abuse, the combination thereof.
And that's what we lead with.
Right.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that's clear, that everybody understands that. Okay. Any other questions?
I guess just one bit of clarification that I want to make sure is that I'm clear on is just because it doesn't specify in the ordinance itself, but as far as the timing of things, so we've talked about how the, the interaction with any individual who happens to be camping on public property is to, you know, start with empathy, again, it could be a resident, it could be someone who's visiting, it could be a lot of things, but to start with empathy and understand what's going on with the situation, is there a scenario where they, that individual refuses the resources that are given, and we immediately then take down the tent and, or is it like, are we giving it, is there a process involved here?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Greenberg, the challenge in responding to that is it's a set of hypotheticals. There's no single way to go about addressing any issue. One of the examples we provided here at City Hall last summer, an individual was essentially living out with their car with two dogs, it took several days to connect them with the appropriate resources, and ultimately, that was one of our success stories. So there's no intention of immediately removing amenities, although if it has been suggested, if it's, you know, taking items from people, immediately throwing, and it's been suggested selling their items, that, that's untrue. It takes a certain amount of time, certainly, in different circumstances, but what you're asking is a set of hypotheticals, so I don't have a definite answer.
Okay. And then along with that, that the reason why it's not, that there aren't those specific details is because there's so many different types of scenarios, and some of, some of these individuals, it might be completely benign, but there also might be situations where, you know, there's public safety involved in which, like, it could change the nature of the interaction. So is it, am I understanding that part right, that it isn't specified, because you do, there are so many different types of scenarios that need flexibility?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Greenberg, that's spot on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to floor?
Mayor, I open, I move that we open the floor here for public comment.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no or nay? Okay. The floor is open, and I believe we gave dibs to HRC, if you want to go first.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council, hey, Tim, hey, Chase. I'm Courtney Kirkie, and I'm the vice chair of the Human Rights Commission. I'm not going to take a lot of time, not going to go through the four pages here, but I just want to clarify our intent with the document that we submitted. We don't mean to criticize or imply ill intent on the city or anyone that works for the city. We're just more concerned about the language and how it might be interpreted in the future. You know, we, we have great city staff right now, I, I believe everyone is leading with compassion, but the concern is for, should something happen and someone else comes in, how are they going to interpret the policy? So that's our intent behind it, just want to clarify that, and I'll keep it short so everyone else else has an opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Thanks, Courtney. Anybody else?
Hello, everyone, my name is Mark Welma, I live at fifty-one twenty Parker Circle in Robinsdale. in Robinsdale. Our family also owns Robinsdale Ace Hardware on Broadway. I just wanna thank you, thank the City of Robinsdale, council members, the mayor, and everyone here for giving me the opportunity to speak on this important subject. We also own another store in South Minneapolis in the Phillips neighborhood that we've owned for seventy-one years. The last five years have been a real challenge in South, in our South Minneapolis location, particularly related to the growing number of homeless encampments. I've seen firsthand how these encampments begin. One or two tents go up, and then more join, and before long, the, the area becomes overwhelmed. With that, we've seen an increase in drug dealing, prostitution, crime, and significant shoplifting at our South Minneapolis store. Eighteen propane tanks in our exchange room were stolen one night, and our AC units were tore into and about five dollars worth of copper tubing were taken from them, and that costed us ten thousand dollars to replace them. The residents, a lot of them immigrants in that neighborhood that live nearby these encampments, have suffered as well. Their cars, their garages, and their homes have been broken into. In one case, a large encampment behind our store led to two nearby homes catching fire. And this is all on city property. They found out the which lots the, the city owns and they moved into them. It's become dangerous and unsustainable for everyone in the community. Fortunately, in the recent months, the City of Minneapolis, led by the mayor and the plea chief, have taken action. They've stopped the formation of the new encampments, and as a result, the neighborhood has drastically improved. The area is safer and more stable. Now I want, now I want to be clear, I do have compassion for the homeless, and I know that they are still out there, and I understand the struggles that they face. A few years ago, I took in two men about my age who had lost their home due to poor decisions. They were about to become homeless, so I let them stay in a heated garage with a bathroom that I have near the store. They lived there for two years until I was able to connect them, finally, this took a while, for Hennepin County Services. Eventually, they moved into a permanent housing, and I also helped them sign up for Social Security, and they live in a nice apartment in the Theater Worth area off of three ninety-four and are doing well. I think about them often, especially after hearing the sermon last Sunday about the Good Samaritan. This message stuck with me, is I see people living in tents as some of those same victims on the side of the road, and I believe it is our duty, not just as a city or county or as a state, but as people, to not leave them there. Robinsdale, Hennepin County, and the state of Minnesota have shown that they do care, and they're working to connect these people with the resources they need, but simply leaving people in tents, exposed and vulnerable, is not compassion, it's abandonment. Thank you again for your time and allowing me to share my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Naomi Wilson. I am a Minneapolis resident, and for two years, I lived within walking distance of the hardware store mentioned by the previous commenter, and I am here to tell you that ever since the encampment ban has been enforced fully in Minneapolis, I see my unhoused neighbors struggling more than ever. They are pushed from block to block, they cannot sleep at night because there is no place for them to put a tent. They are not service resistant because there are simply not adequate services. Hennepin County does a great job with their Housing First program, we're leading the nation in ending homelessness through housing, but when cities enact camping bans, it's the unhoused people who suffer the most. People in an encampment, in a tent, are safer than people who are alone. Women are less likely to get picked off by traffickers when they are, have a safe place to camp, they're less likely to be murdered. These are all things that we have seen, and these are all things that have intensified in Minneapolis since they passed their camping ban. And since the police take people's tents the minute they set them up, I know people who go five days without sleeping because there is no safe place for them to camp. I am deeply encouraged by the talk that I hear from you about compassion. I think there is hope, but I would just like you to be deeply aware that there are not enough shelter beds, there are not enough services, there are not enough affordable units, and camping bans just push people from place to place, and it makes it harder for their social workers and their case managers to find them. So I just ask that you would look at the example of Minneapolis, we have over two hundred unhoused residents who cannot even get a decent night of sleep because they cannot set up a tent because there is nowhere for them to go, and I hope that you would bear that in mind because camping bans literally prevent people from being able to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Cameron, and I'm at forty-two oh three Forty-Sixth Avenue North. I think that's in Robinsdale, that's what I thought, but looking at one map, I got confused. So anyways, I apologize for not preparing better for this comment, I just saw a sign and read some notes and came and listened tonight, so I wish, I wish I'd been better prepared. I am also a veteran, so I would ask that you not cite veteran issues or veteran help for using that as a reason for this ordinance, that stuff already exists, and I also don't understand the purpose of this ordinance, why can't we just do those things to help people unhoused without banning tents, or tents on public property? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kristen Crabtree, and I am also a resident of Minneapolis, and I heard about what was happening here tonight, and wanted to make sure that I shared some of our experience that some of my neighbors have already spoken to. I think you can see from the example in the City of Minneapolis that there's been what I would hope would be unintended consequences of the current ordinances at our city involving banning camping on public property. I also was really encouraged, like the speaker before me said, to hear about compassion and your priorities there, and what I would hope is that when you're looking at this ordinance, that you would make sure that it's a bit more robust in light of some of the comments that I read your letter, and, and I think those are some of the unintended consequences we've seen. Many of our neighbors, like the speaker before me said, do not have access to services, and the speaker before that also talked about how long it took for him to help the two people that were, that he was supporting. It often takes quite a bit of time for people to access housing using the Streets to Housing Services offered by Hennepin County, coordinated entry can take months, and if you have a criminal record, that adds to the time, so we wanna be certain that people are not being criminalized through this ordinance, and I would recommend that that gets, at something, some language around that gets added in, because that can be an unintended consequence that causes more harm. Not only that, but if it takes longer to house people, then the issue could grow, and I think what we all want is to see people getting the services that they need and to see people inside, and some of the best ways to do that are through humane responses, and that would include, you know, implementing, you know, interim low barrier and housing-focused approaches as opposed to carceral responses, and making sure that there are efforts to coordinate closely with Hennepin County and the state. A multi-jurisdictional process is really critically important, looking at who funds what and how these systems work or don't work together. So I would really invite for you to consider some of those things, and I will also say that now that the City of Minneapolis does have this encampment prevention kind of process that they're using, we have seen an uptick actually in a lot of the harm, a lot of our people have ended up in jail, which slows their access to housing, a lot of people have ended up overdosing, we've seen women trafficked all over the country, and we have seen an increase in sexual assaults as well. So those are unintended consequences when we don't think about the ultimate impact, you know, as opposed to the intent of an ordinance, and I would hope that you would hold those things in light. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We came here ten years ago on June, on June first last month, we've been here for ten years, okay? We've had homelessness here since day one, okay? So people who don't think we have homelessness, you're wrong, okay, you're wrong. We do have homeless here. We've been dealing with it for ten years, right from the second we got here, we've been dealing with it, and I deal with it almost every day. Okay, so I see what's happening here every day and say, we ban homelessness, we don't ban homelessness. Homelessness is a global thing, it's all over, it's here, okay? And that's the way it's been for ten years. I've spent thousands and thousands of dollars fixing stuff. Did I come to you recently, Tim, and say, you know what? The guy paid ten thousand bucks for the damage to my building, the homeless guy did, got in there, first thing he did was use the shedder, and then he tears my building up. Ten grand, did I come, Tim, you know, you, you need to pay me that ten grand, Robinsdale owes me ten thousand dollars. They don't. I pay up, I man up, I take care of it, okay? And let me tell you about the safety. I, I, I spend a lot of time at the bus stop. I can assure you, they don't know where the bus stop is, and they have never spent any time at the bus stop. I spent time at the bus stop over ten years, I've been to the bus stop, I've called welfare checks, I've sat with people, I brought food over there, for ten years I've done this, okay? And then, well, you, duh, 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 no, no, we've been taken, Robinsdale has been taking care of their homelessness, we don't need tents, we do not need tents, we take care of it, it's been great, it's worked out, and let me tell you something, I'm gonna tell you, I sat over there at the bus stop for like an hour one day talking to this lady. Lady, she was, she wanted to sleep, all she wanted to do was sleep, she was an alcoholic, okay? So she had just come there from the city, Minneapolis, on a bus, okay? And she's sitting there, and I'm sitting there talking to her, she told me, she told me why she had to leave the encampment. It's called train rape, okay? That's what this lady told me, I'm like, what the hell is that? She said, what they do is they see how fast they can get into the tent, okay? And once they're in the tent, they either beat you unconscious or they drug you, and then they rape you all night long. And the first guy who gets it done, he takes trade-ins on, on, on drugs or food or whatever to, for the next guy to go in and get after, and this happens all night long. She said, I couldn't live there anymore, I could not live there anymore because of this. So whoever thinks a tent, a paper-thin tent is gonna help you, they are wrong, that's not gonna do nothing. A knife, up this, up the zipper goes, in you go, done, raping all night long. And she said, this happened in all these encampments, these new encampments, okay? This is what happens there. And she said, this isn't just one episode, it happens all throughout the whole encampment, okay? And I'm just like, you gotta be kidding me to listen to this, you know? And I stay in a tent, I, and once a year when I go to Sturgis, I stay in a tent. At the end of that week, I wanna be out of that tent so bad, it's not even funny, living in a tent would suck, okay? It's terrible, you don't have nowhere to go to the bathroom, you got nowhere to go to take a shower, make some food, anything, you got nothing. So anyway, that's all I'm saying, and I got four hours, not four minutes, four hours worth of stuff I can tell you that happens up at that bus stop, and it would take all four hours to get it done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
First off, I have social anxiety, guys, I'm doing my best. First off, I wanna say, I oppose this, and it's no surprise to most people here, but I think that we need to separate the criminality in large encampments from the other people who are simply homeless, and there's a lot of them, and it affects a lot of people. And I think that the problem here, why I oppose this, is this zone, this ordinance is so overly broad, like, it was, it's very vague, it doesn't say timelines, it doesn't say process, it doesn't leave information out there for people to dissect what's gonna happen or what that even means. For example, it says you cannot remain in a tent or something. Okay, so, I'm a rural follower and I like details. If, what if, you know, I had extended family and we wanted to go to Sanborn Park, and we popped up one of those screens, tents that, for mosquitoes to just eat a meal, that's considered remaining in a tent? That's now a code violation. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it just, it's so entirely vague that it doesn't even, it doesn't even seem like it can be put in a place except for like, in a discriminatory fashion, that if the city doesn't like somebody, then they're gonna cut it down to twenty-four hours. If they feel bad for the person, they'll let it go for three weeks, and they'll give them more resources. But one thing too, in reading about this, is that, one of the biggest things I think people don't understand is that, right now, in twenty-twenty-three first, okay, had, had, there was four thousand single people who were turned away from shelters in Hennepin County, and so much that now that they don't even like answer the phone for the hotline anymore, they just put a recording on, so they don't even know how many people are actually calling and aren't getting, that are getting turned away from beds. And so, if there really is not enough shelters and things out there, and now, I am not saying, okay, everybody can pitch a tent, but I live on a very busy corner, I see homeless people all the time as well. The type of homeless people I see are the people who are displaced, like, it seems like it's not a lifestyle, they're, you know, they're sleeping on the bench, they don't know where to go. I routinely will drive by the police station and see, I've even seen youth out there, sitting on the bench because they've got nowhere to go, they're scared to death, so they're sitting outside the police station so that nobody messes with them. I mean, that kind of stuff just breaks my heart, like, and I just think that this is partially criminalizing poverty. I know you're not trying to criminalize homeless people, but it's, it's literally making the lives of poor people harder, and I believe in having, like, more information on this, right? Even like when it comes to, say, the camping trailers and stuff like that, I get it. So what if somebody comes from out of town in North Memorial and they're pulling a camping trailer, and they have it parked outside the, the place because they can't pull it on the ramp, and they go outside and they remain in their camping trailer for two minutes and the cops come by? How do they not know that they're not sleeping in there? It says you can't even remain in a camping trailer. You can't even like eat something, right? You can't even do anything in it, like, for a second, like, it's too, it's just like, it's so open for interpretation, that it's like, that's where I have a problem with this ordinance, is there needs to be specifics, there needs to be different stuff. It's great that we have resources to give people, but like, the thing is, this is, it's just, it, the way it's written right now, I'm a hundred percent on board for it, I do understand that there is stuff, and when you, and I, and especially with that, you know, situation with the fire under the water tower, that was a criminality aspect taking place there. You cannot be having open burns places, you need to have permits even on your own land. Regulate on that, and, and, you know, take it from there, like, and don't let large encampments happen, you know? So, that's my, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we get a name to go with that? Kate Richardson? Okay. And Robinsdale resident? Okay. Anyone else?
The cardboard homeless sign has been compared to a mirror in that reactions to it say more about the person that views it than the person who holds it. Jeff Gray is an activist, Jeff Gray is an activist in Florida who fights for the homeless, both through work with nonprofits and by holding his own sign, which simply reads, "God bless the homeless vets." Over the course of the last two to three years, he's been arrested about a dozen times for sharing a message of compassion on the steps of various city halls and other designated traditional public forums. Mr. Gray has never been convicted of any charge, whether it be trespassing, panhandling, or failure to ID, and his experience of even perceived homelessness illuminates the pitfalls of trying to police away the homeless, which is exactly what this ordinance is attempting to do. which is exactly what this ordinance is attempting to do. This ordinance only seeks to hurt and further injure community members who are already struggling to keep from drowning. This isn't a flotation device. It's an anvil. Punitive ordinances passed in the wake of the Supreme Court's Grants Pass decision are the least effective means to address homelessness. The sentiment of that decision is best summed up by Lily Morgan, who in twenty thirteen was the council president of Grants Pass and said, quote, "The point is to make it uncomfortable enough for them in our city so that they will want to move on down the road." The work of Cornell University's Dr. Charlie E. Willison, specifically her brief, "Policing and the Punitive Politics of Local Homeless Policy," outlines how this and similar policies fail to help. Quote, "Such policies do not end homelessness. Instead, they may actually promote cycles of homelessness." Quote, "Fines and fees make it harder to access employment and social services. In some cases, criminal charges impact people's eligibility for existing social services and housing programs. Property confiscation during encampment clearance may come at the expense of documents that are essential for obtaining housing, employment, insurance, like birth certificates and identification." At the June third council meeting, council members had a great thorough discussion about encouraging civic engagement, wanting more data, and wanted to make sure personal property, uh, was respected. I thank council member Wagner in particular for his justified hesitation in moving forward with an ordinance for which no meaningful data nor public, nor, nor public forum comment existed at that point. I'd like to point out that a lot of things that have already been mentioned, or that were mentioned on the June third meeting, are already crimes. Specifically, uh, like drug use, prostitution, et cetera. No one benefits from pearl clutching in the realm of policy decisions. And I feel like this ordinance is first ballot Hall of Fame level pearl clutching. In twenty-three consecutive days that I've been holding a cardboard sign in opposition to this homeless ban, I've had meaningful discussions with citizens and become much more civically engaged. To the council members and mayor, I really don't think that this ordinance makes any sense. It doesn't pass the sniff test. And I believe this ordinance says more about the hearts and minds of the people who support it than the people it directly impacts. It's cowardly, downward punching, and pathetic. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Seeing that there isn't anyone else that wants to speak, I'll make a motion to close the public comment period.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no or nay. The hearing is closed. All right. Tim, now what?
Mr. Mayor, council, uh, following public input. Um, sometimes there are, uh, specific questions. I got a couple, uh, jotted down, but I would defer to council. If there's specific items you'd like feedback on, that would be a great time. I'd be happy to respond.
Uh, council, do you have questions? Comments?
I think one that jumped out to me, um, if, if it's okay.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so just talking about like the punitive nature and fining that, you know, that we're punishing people for being homeless and this, and I, I I understand where the concern is coming from, but I, I think that's not the intention of what, of what we've talked about and what we're talking about in the ordinance. So can you just clarify that there's, like, are we making people pay for being homeless? Or that if they were camping in Robbinsdale?
Mr. Mayor, council, Councilmember Greenberg, I guess a couple of things, uh, not to correct you. There, there's no violation for being homeless. The violation is the tenting to the camping. Um, the, this would be true if overnight camping at the park, uh, somewhere with the critical infrastructure or otherwise in city property. Uh, that said, there is absolutely no intention, uh, to have any type of, um, monetary penalty as a part of this. Prior to having this, the, the city didn't have, uh, a rule to indicate that this is not permitted. I think there's been suggestion that, um, other examples of crimes being committed, uh, whether it's at an encampment or at a single, uh, person tented up, uh, when those occur, uh, the police department has recourse. We're not looking to wait for that to happen. Uh, we're looking to be proactive, uh, for, again, a person that may be in those circumstances for any number of reasons, uh, to work with them, again, with leading, with compassion, uh, to move forward in the process. Much like, in not a fair comparison, but other violations of code. If you're sent a letter that your grass is too long and you correct that, that, you, you're not cited for a violation. So when the, the violation of code is rectified, no punitive damages fall.
Thank you for that clarification.
Can I add to that question?
Please.
Um, yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Greenberg for the question. Thank you, Tim, for responding to our concerns. I also just wanna take the moment to thank the public too for speaking here tonight. Uh, in the HRC letter, they reference, they say that in Robbinsdale City Code, section one fifteen, it provides that unless stated otherwise, a violation of a code is a misdemeanor. So I know you just spoke to, you know, if, if there's, um, if they comply and all of that, then just like a long grass, like, they're not gonna get cited or what have you. But if this is followed through all the way, is it a misdemeanor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, Councilmember Wagner, so there, there would be an opportunity for interpretation, whether it be a misdemeanor or an administrative penalty. Uh, much like other areas of code, we would have that opportunity to make that interpretation.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, um, the one thing, I, first and foremost, thank you all for coming and being present. I think this speaks volumes to those who are brave to speak and talk and those who are here in, in support, whatever that might be. Uh, thank you for showing up and being present, and those right home as well too, watching. Um, the one conversation, the one, um, that has brought up for me that I just wanna just sit with for a little bit is, as we think future-oriented and recognizing that we may or may not be here, and knowing our hearts and our intent and what we mean as far as providing this ordinance, um, and the discretionary that might, discretion that we have as far as freedoms, um, and thinking about future language, and is this something that we feel we have enough in here, because we kept it very vague, very specifically? That's a, that was a request from council, uh, for many reasons that you have named. And also recognizing that as this sits in, in a space where it does become, um, um, something that we are following, as we move along, if it is something to say, yep. I should ask him two questions then. Um, so as we move along, are there concerns that we have as a council around the language being as vague as it is and for future interpretation, and as far as the city as well too? And then, with that being said, um, if there are things that happen or come to light later on, knowing that we can shift and change the ordinance, is that a possibility as well too?
Mr. Mayor, council, Councilmember Blackledge, uh, let me know if I don't respond to the, I think, couple of questions in there. Um, first of all, language-wise, certainly appreciate concern related to, um, maybe not being as explicit as some may like. The, the challenge I would offer to that is that gives room for interpretation. Um, the example of somebody setting up a screen tent in the park for a picnic, that allows staff, the interpretation, to know that that's not a violation of the intent of the code. Uh, much like the example I gave earlier, uh, about a business and accessory, uh, unit on a property, staff is able to make that. Now, I think to combine a couple of your comments to the latter question, uh, if council, this or otherwise in the future, feels that this language is not successful, it can certainly, like, other code be repealed.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, please.
And just to add some additional detail, because I do believe, I don't have the specific number in front of me, but as far as how public safety is to interact with, um, individuals experiencing homelessness or, um, but there is language in that public safety piece of the code that says that we're leading with empathy and treating people humanely. Is that, that, that's an separate part of code. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, council, so I, I think, uh, Councilmember Greenberg, what you're referring to is an established policy four twenty-eight of the Robbinsdale Police Department. That explicitly does call that out. That existed prior to this. So these would happen in concert. One does not go before the other. These happen simultaneously.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Thank you.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you. Um, I have a few thoughts that I've prepared, so thanks in advance. Um, but I first want to acknowledge the considerable effort that it's taken for staff to, um, put into drafting this ordinance. Um, they have facilitated multiple conversations in council meetings and work sessions, and provided contextual resources, and have done so with a lot of care, so thank you for that. Um, they're drivers to build consensus with care and clarity, and that hasn't go, that has not gone unnoticed, so thank you. And I also want to say thank you to all of you who have, uh, shared your, uh, feedback this evening. Um, those who've provided advanced public comment, and especially the Robbinsdale Human Rights Commission and the members of the subcommittee of the unhoused policy. Your public comment is well-researched and thoughtful, and, uh, your contribution reflects a deep commitment to dignity, equity, and evidence-based policy, and that work deserves to be seen and heard. Now, I want to be clear. I do believe the city of Robbinsdale has a responsibility to ensure public safety and manage the use of public space. I do not oppose the idea of policy related to camping on city-owned property. However, I plan to vote no on the second reading of the proposed ordinance tonight. Not because I believe that no policy should exist, but I believe we have not gone about it in the right way. So the process, in my view, has been rushed, and it was initiated in response to some isolated incidents, um, perhaps fast-tracked without enough early engagement from the very groups that should help shape this kind of policy, namely, our Human Rights Commission, our unhoused advocates, and those with lived experience. So the HRC asked some important questions. Uh, is there data showing this ordinance is necessary? How will this affect real people? And especially those who already face systemic barriers. So it's not enough to say that we won't criminalize homelessness. I believe we need to write that intent into the policy itself. I think there's an opportunity to further root this ordinance in the compassion that we've been talking about and incorporate language that requires outreach and service referrals before enforcement, provides advance notice before the removal of shelter and belongings, just like other cities in our region do, and ensures safeguards for the personal property, and outlines transparent, non-criminal procedures that affirm the dignity of those impacted. We agree that we want to treat the unhoused with compassion, but the ordinance language doesn't reflect that yet. As it's written, we've talked about it's vague, it's open to broad interpretation, and lacking some of the fundamental protections that should be standard in any policy that intersects with human survival. And as mentioned, our city's own police, police policy four twenty-eight already reflects that commitment to treating unhoused individuals with dignity, stating that homelessness is not a crime and that property should not be destroyed. And this proposed ordinance does not align with that spirit. Instead, it opens the door to punitive outcomes, especially if applied inconsistently or without oversight. So as I said tonight, I plan to vote no, not because I oppose governance of public space, but because I believe this is an important opportunity for Robbinsdale to get that right. So I would love for council to consider taking a step back and convene in a working group that includes staff, the HRC, the PRF Commission, uh, law enforcement, social service providers, and unhoused voices. I'm confident that with the appropriate process, we can find consensus in a policy that we can stand behind and one that affirms safety and dignity. So my no vote tonight is not a rejection of action, and it's simply a call for better action built on process, principle, and compassion. That's all I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, other questions or comments from the council?
Can I make a comment?
Of course you can.
So thank you for sharing that, Mia. I, I guess, I, I feel like we've had a number of work sessions where we have talked about this, and that hasn't come up until right now. And I feel like if that was a major issue for voting no, then, like, that would have come up prior to this conversation. Um, I, I feel like we really did go through a good process. The Human Rights Commission was in our work session. We heard from the police, and, I mean, we, I think as a council, have had a lot of detailed questions and concerns, and we've talked through all of that, but we never talked about, like, this process is bad. So I feel like, I mean, my plan is to vote yes. We, we've, we've talked about this a lot. We've used a lot of city resources to come up to where we are now because we've gone back and clarified and asked questions. Um, and I think one thing that's been really clear, clear, excuse me, uh, and Raymond, uh, or, um, council member Blackledge mentioned it earlier of, you know, being able to change this if it's not implemented the way that we intended. So, I, I, I mean, it is a, I don't, I'm not saying that that's not a valid point. I just feel like we did do a lot of process and, and through that, if there was a problem, I feel like it should have come up then instead of now. And I don't know, maybe, that's a question, is, like, did something change that, like, the process didn't work previously?
If I could respond.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Perez, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Greenberg. Um, I believe that the process has, as I mentioned, has been, uh, a little bit backwards in a sense, where, for example, tonight, we've got a lot of folks here who are providing comment just before we're being asked to make a final decision on it. So that is unfair to everyone in the room. Um, so it's not just, and it's not the fact that good conversation hasn't happened up until this point, but I also work with, like, in my outside job, I work with a lot of policy, and I see the consequences for when policies are too vague. And I think every one of us as council members have the, the responsibility to reflect in the time that we're given between votes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, the work session that you mentioned, I regret to have not been present for that. Um, but I do feel like, uh, the best that I can do and that I hope the rest of us can do is to take that time to reflect and share, uh, exactly where we're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Tim, can I ask a question? Um, so, uh, it was just mentioned that we're removing property without notice, uh, without oversight. Uh, without having memorized the RPD policy, I do believe I saw something in there that there is oversight or there is, there is an engagement process with a supervisor, is there not? When it comes to, uh, property being removed, and is there a conversation that happens with the individual? I guess if they're not to be found, and there are instances where property is just flat-out abandoned, right? But...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, so I think what you're referring to, uh, part of section or policy four twenty-eight, four twenty-eight point four, "Personal property, the personal property of homeless persons must not be treated differently than the property of other members of the public. Officers should use reasonable care when handling, collecting, and retaining personal..." Officers should use reasonable care when handling, collecting, and retaining personal property of homeless persons and should not destroy or discard the personal property of a homeless person. When a homeless person is arrested or otherwise removed from a public place, officers should make reasonable accommodations to permit the person to lawfully secure his or her personal property. Otherwise, uh, uh, personal property should be collected for safekeeping." Uh, it goes on from there, but I believe those are the, the points that you're referencing.
Okay. Um, it feels like there's this assumption that the police are somehow bad people or gonna do a bad thing. And just reading through RPD's policy and I don't know how many of you here have spent time with any of the officers of the Robbinsdale Police Department. When I took office, I did a two-day ride-along with the department. And what I found over those two eight-hour shifts with four different officers and meeting five more is this is a department that cares. They lead with compassion. I have seen them arrest people and it is yes sir and no ma'am. They are, without a doubt, led by some of the most compassionate leaders I have met. Chief Foley, John Elder, if anybody in this room has met either one of those individuals, they would know the character that I'm talking about. And if you haven't met them, shame on you for judging them because they do their job. And they do their job with compassion. And that is something every member of this council should understand and I hope engages with the officers as well. Now, when it comes to this ordinance, yes, there are going to be people who are impacted adversely by it. And that is a sad fact of life. We are not all given the same opportunities. We do not all make the same choices. We sometimes fall into addiction, mental illness. But this community needs ordinances and laws to protect you, the residents. Allowing camping to take place in a park after close assumes that there's management of that property. If something goes wrong, who takes care of that? The city doesn't have staff to monitor that. We don't have sanitation to make sure that people are able to go to the bathroom or dispose of their waste. We, a lot of times, if waste is there, it's just cast off to the side. We know, and sadly we know, that drug addiction, prostitution, mental illness, all go with homelessness. But what if? What if, one day, that tent is in the park? And there's drug abuse, or we talked about the individual who got raped, and I don't doubt it, right? I don't know how a zipper and a piece of fabric is any safer than going to a shelter, and I know that sometimes it's a struggle to get them to the resources. I do understand that. But to simply just say, "Well, we'll let you stay here", but what happens if a needle is left because drug use is a thing? A pipe? What if something happens to a resident who's strolling through the park at night on their way home? I just, I, I would lose sleep if something happened. And I think that this ordinance, although vague for some, needs to be coupled with the knowledge that we've got a darn good police force that cares and we can come back and revisit this ordinance if for some reason something falls out of line. So clearly, I'm a vote yes on this. But I just ask you to please take into consideration the good work and the good people that are at Robbinsdale Police Department. That is all for me. Anybody else?
Okay, all right, I'll go. Um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for the discussion. Again, thank you to the public for providing your input. It's been very helpful and enlightening for me over the last month since we've solicited that feedback. Thank you to staff for putting this together and having this, um, conversation. Um, but I, I also just wanna, um, call out Councilmember Parisian for having a well-prepared statement. Mine is not well-prepared and it's, it's, it doesn't even meet the definition of it. So I apologize if this is scattered, but as people are talking, I think one thing that Councilmember Parisian, um, brought up is that this, as we're talking about it as a council, as we're talking about it as a city, as feedback comes in, things can change, the discussion is ongoing. And so I guess I wanna reiterate that point too, that, um, it wasn't that the discussions we had previously about these were inadequate or missing, well, they were missing public feedback, I guess, is my point. And so that's why I think this is useful if we are going to, which, I don't know if I'm in support of like going back and rehashing this out, but if that's, it seems like that's the appetite of the rest of the, the council, um, uh, if, because it seems like they're, they wanna, uh, other people wanna get this through. So I, I guess I can support Councilmember Parisian's call, pardon me, calls to rehash this out essentially with more intention and things like that. For me, as I've been thinking about this, I'm really just stuck on this one question. I'm stuck on the question about how else can a person exist as an unhoused person? If they're not, you know, if they're not in a tent, i- i- I mean, if they're wrapped in blankets, you know, is that a shelter? If they're, like, at what point do we define somebody as, or a policy as not criminalizing someone being unhoused? Because if, if it's not this, then, then what is it? Is it, you can't lie horizontally in any public space? Because I think that's where we're headed and I'm sorry if that's not clear, but just like, if I'm, if I lack shelter, if I lack a permanent place of residency, what else am I gonna do except pitch a tent somewhere? So to me, this kind of de facto makes it a policy specific around unhoused folks. I know it's not in the ordinance, uh, language at all, but I can't see any other way around it. I mean, it's, and it's, and again, as other people have pointed to, it's broad enough that you could interpret it in a way that like picnic goers with a mosquito shield. Yeah, maybe, I don't know. And I think that is part of the issue with this, and I, again, agree with Councilmember Parisian, having a more thorough discussion, having a more um, in-the-weeds conversation, I think can really hammer out the weaknesses in this policy i- if, you know, if we, if we're so adamant on passing it. Um, I think speaking to the notion of repealing things once passed, in my experience, not only with this body, but watching government of all levels, that rarely ever happens. So I would, I have been operating the last two and a half years under the assumption and under the guidance or self-guidance that anything we do and pass is going to be in place for a long time. And so I, I just, I ask the council to, to consider that as well. Um, again, scattered notes here. I think going back, there's been a lot, a lot of, um, talk about intent. And that is concerning to me because as much as our current city manager is a really good and capable city manager, uh, I agree, RPD, um, all my interactions with them have been nothing but positive. Turnover happens in those places. And we can't account for intent in the future. It's just, I think that's kind of like irrational. It's not really something you can formulate a real argument around because people's interpretation of just words change over time. So I, I, again, going back to this, um, call for specificity, specificity, I think is warranted and something we should explore. Hmm, the... Let's see. I think the, oh, and I think one public commenter really helped, um, kind of enlighten my view on this. The notion about, you know, crimes being committed from people that are in tents or unhoused is, I think, a valid concern. And also, I think the comments are rightfully pointed out, those activities are already against the law. So we should just enforce these existing laws to deal with it instead of coming up with a policy that is too vague and too broad that can be interpreted one way in this moment in time and interpreted another way twenty years from now. So I think that really helped me out, so thank you to whoever, uh, said that. And I think, oh, uh, to the mayor's point about the site being clean, I think that's a good call-out. I would hope that Robbinsdale policy, the police department policy, um, has that in there about if, you know, the RPD are engaging with somebody, um, with a status that, and they are have to remove their, um, take their property, that the site is inspected and cleaned thoroughly. If it's not in there, then it should be part of RPD policy. And speaking of RPD policy, I think, again, Councilmember Parisian was correct to point out that this ordinance does not match the spirit of the Robbinsdale Police Department's, uh, own policy. And if we are going to come up with something, then it should, it should match the, um, um, specificity of it and the, um, kind of the, the, uh, spirit of it. And so those are kind of the more, if you like, the more rational reasons that I am trying to reason out, but I think there's a moral component to this too. And I, I think that someone that went to Catholic school for a long time and that who's upbringing in, in a religion really informed their worldview, I, I think it is important to point that out and and I guess in my context, it's, you know, somebody of the Christian faith, and so when we think about Jesus or any of the, um, prophets that are helping poor people, there's no condition about the help, right? We're not, they're not going to be, um, judged because they act as, uh, a certain way or follow, you know, a city ordinance. And I just think that if we're ascribing a criteria to service such as "You need to comply with this, otherwise we're gonna, uh, ship you out", then I just, I just, I don't, that doesn't sit right with me. I really think we should be, um, leading with compassion and, and I know people have said that before, but I just, I can't see how this does that. And I'll wrap it up there and, again, kind of all over the place, but I'm not gonna support this in its current state, and I probably won't support it in any state, but if the council wants to go back to a work session to, to really hammer out some stronger language, um, I would, uh, I would enthusiastically get behind that too.
Any other comments? Councilmember Blackledge?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gearing up.
He's getting ready, okay.
I do have a question, Tim. So, Tim, for instance, if this is a conversation that we, that needs to be continued and this is not, um, to the appetite of the, the city council to approve this now, is there a possibility to continue to provide, I guess, I think, I just want to thank you for your input, um, Councilmember Parisian, that was insightful, that was very intentional, and I think the one thing I do want public to understand is that we are human, we are people who are here loving our community. We're trying to be intentional on what that looks like. I don't think there's any part of me, myself, and/or our community, I would speak to, or our city, that is trying to harm people, and I'm just gonna call that out very specifically. Um, so yeah, that's the question I have, and I would love to continue on my thoughts after that.
Mr. Mayor Council, Councilmember Blackledge, if I'm understanding your question, uh, please correct me if not. Uh, if, I guess the, the council could go a couple of different ways here. So, staff's recommendation would be to take a vote, uh, as stated, staff's recommendation is approval. Uh, if approval is achieved, uh, ordinance will become effective immediately upon passage. If not, uh, there are, there's a bit of nuance here. Uh, the council has some standing rules, uh, for items like this that do not get approved, waiting a six-month period to go back. Uh, what we could do is work with the attorney, uh, where the, the nuance might be is how bolstered language becomes. Um, if it's a, a big enough distinction to, to call that difference out, I can't answer that tonight because we're talking hypothetically. Uh, one of the things I do wanna note is, um, there's, there's been a couple of call-outs between the policy and, uh, language and code. I know we discussed that at some, uh, other meetings, but for the benefit of the folks that are here tonight, uh, oftentimes, why we don't use language, uh, like lead with compassion, uh, why we don't use language that's difficult to enforce in code is because that can be challenged in some type of, um, dispute, right? So if I were to say that your grass is too long, uh, and I'm supposed to tell you that with compassion, the person with the long grass is gonna say, "Well, it's not a violation because the way it was dealt was, it's not with compassion." The policy, uh, is set forth in a personnel policy, um, supposed to be dealt with, that if we find that that's a violation, it'd be dealt with that way. So, I just wanna make sure that that nuance for both considerations is, um, clear as we go forward. So if I didn't answer your question, please let me know.
Okay. No, I, I think that answers my question. I'll just repeat that just to make sure I'm, I'm clear as well too. So if we were to say, "Let's bring this back to the conversation", this, an ordinance or any of that nature wouldn't be able to be revisited for the six months?
Correct.
Or is that, are that two separate things?
I'm sorry, can you ask, I guess I'm not entirely understanding what you're asking.
Yep, so if we vote, if there is a conversation or that goes back to a work session, um, to revamp or maybe bolster language or anything like that, of that nature, does that impact the vote? Do we take a vote tonight, or is that, let's move this back to the work session and continue that conversation, and from there we are not able to bring this back up, or is it, if we don't vote, we can bring it back to a work session? I'm just trying to, yep?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Council, so again, I, I think you've got, uh, two directions to go here, Councilmember Blackledge. Show vote approval, uh, vote in the negative. If it is a vote in the negative, we'll have to work with the city attorney to understand timeline up to six months before a formal discussion, possibly. But again, I don't have that answer for you tonight because we're dealing in hypotheticals.
Yep.
Yes. Can I ask a quick question?
Please, yes, please.
I know you have things you wanna say, but directly related to this, um, to, to Councilmember Blackledge's question. Is this the type of item that we can table? Or if we, we need a vote yes or no? Like, could we table it and then extend that timeframe, or we, there needs to be a vote yes or no?
Um, Mr. Mayor Council, um, well, that's tough. Uh, for a second reading, staff would not advise a motion to table. Uh, in large part, a motion to table is non-debatable, so providing clarity as to what those next steps would be would definitely be lacking. Um, so again, we're staffs, uh, suggesting an approval or a denial would be your to-pass forward here tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blackledge, your point?
Yeah, um, wow, um, so many thoughts, so many ideas. And I think I will start by this, speaking how I came in today in this conversation and kind of my thought process was. Um, I know that we reached out, well, I need to out-backtrack that. When this was first brought to our attention, as far as this ordinance and thinking about how it would impact our community, how it would impact our neighbors and this still is visiting Robbinsdale, um, thinking about camping in that sense, um, one thing that came to mind was um, the information of how our police are handling the situation. And I was really intentional around learning about what that process looked like for me. And I think people spoke very passionately about one way or another, but I do, I do think about, um, the alignment of the ordinance and the, the alignment of how the police handle situations and have been doing that, and there has been, um, not only evidence of that and information that provided for us to be able to learn and gain some, gain some clarity, but, um, as I continue to think about this and thinking about the intent versus impact, and and one thing I've learned as I've, you know, in life is, if somebody taught me recently, is like, if something's not written, then you can't change and adjust. And I'm not one to think that if we have something that's, that's written that we say, "This is what we commit to today," that we can't go and change that tomorrow because I don't think people work that way. I think that we continue to evolve, we continue to learn and grow and move. And I think from the heart of this, isn't about taking away from and harming people. Because I'm just gonna use that language, I think that's, that has been called out. And I appreciate the feedback from those who are our neighbors as well, too, as far as impacted you. And I also want to be very clear and very intentional by saying, I don't think that that's at the heart of Robbinsdale and who we are as a community. And I think who our police force and who our city is as well, too, when we talk about treating people. And this is who are, is our neighbors, these are people that regardless of circumstance, well, I was, individuals, because that language is very important, individuals who happen to be camping as well, too. And it sounds like, I guess to be very blunt, like, I'm deciding vote, which is a very strange place to be in as well, too. But also something that my community assigned me up for to do. And I hold that so dearly and so intentionally as well as we move forward in these conversations and discussions, knowing that there are five of us up here. And I think there's some of the feedback I've gotten as well, too, is from people who are professionals as well, too, and do work in Hennepin County and do work in other spaces that are working with people, are working with individuals who are camping. And I think it is the camping language as well, too. And we can skirt around and say, "It's about homelessness, it's about," like, it all comes down to how are we interpreting that? And I think how we have shown as a, as a community speaks volumes to that as well for me, and how we will continue to show up as a community to support individuals to the fullest. And I do want to bring back the individual who we talked about, who Tim brought up around car camping. It took time for them to find spaces and places for the individual to, to get that. And that was over a two-month period, if I'm not mistaken? If I can call that out, I don't remember some of the details, I've read a lot this week, the last couple of weeks. And I think my thought is, if we have something in place that is in the spirit and the heart of people first and people centered, and if that seems to be, if that's something that seems to be an issue as we move forward, that we can revisit that, I think that's appropriate as well, too. And I go back to process, and so those are my initial thoughts coming into this day. So, bear with me. And then listening to my, my, my colleagues up here, and also the work that has been done by the city and the attorneys to direct us and our community to talk about, you know, some of the potential pitfalls that we might be facing. Those are real things that we have to consider and think about and address. And I think that's really appropriate for us to, to do that. And the conversation I have in my work is, do we have the right people in the room all the time? And sometimes we miss out on that, and sometimes we don't have the right people in the room at all situations and conversations. And I do feel like there was some opportunity for us to engage more people in a different way than we could have done. And also, addressing some of the concerns that have been brought up. I, I do appreciate the concerns and the, and the conversation that's happened tonight and dialogue. And one thing that just still sits with me is this concern about the language of future and how it's gonna be interpreted. And I think, I think there's a lot to be said around shift or challenge and growth and how we continue to evolve. And I will say, I will be very intentional as a council member, as a member of this community, as someone who has worked with populations as well, too, to say that I would want to be intent, like, making sure that people are taken care of in all, in all form and format. So, in short, I guess, where I'm leaning, not even leaning, but where I'm, I'm still content on being and thinking about this, is if we don't have anything that we can go off of, where can, where do we go from there? And I would love to, I would love to, as we are having this deeper, this deeper dialogue now, which is unfortunate that happens to be a day of voting, unfortunately. But also knowing that what we asked of, what we asked of the city, what we asked them to do, they did. What we asked of our community to show up and give us feedback, that was done. And I would love to, well, obviously not love, but I will say, I will continue to support the ordinance, recognizing that as we continue to move forward, there are gonna be shifts and changes that we may or may not, we may, may need to correct. And I think this goes with a lot of trust and a lot of faith in our city. This goes a lot of trust and a lot of faith in us. And, and I think even with our police force and how they show up and support individuals who are camping in our community. And I think the discretion around code violations and things of that nature, like, I, this is not to, this is not a space to harm or criminalize people. I've come from that world, and this does not feel that way. And I also understand how it does feel that way, and there's no pleasing everybody in that sense. But I, I do want to be, make the commitment to continuing to make sure that we are doing what we say we're doing as a community, we are doing what we say we're doing as a city, and that as council members as well, too. This is, yeah, this is really hard. And I don't think this is like an easy, and I think this is the work that people ask me to do. And I really hope that I am representing in the best way possible. And as someone who is a loving, caring, thoughtful, kind person, who I hope to show up to be, I hope it does not change or impact how I am viewed or how we are viewed as council, but know that we can continue to find ways to best support our neighbors.
Do you want to make a motion? Or do you have another comment?
I do want to make another comment, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay. So, so far what I've spoken about and clarified some questions, but also kind of more responded. But I do want to give my opinion of where we're at. And through this process, I've, I've really been focused on how do people get treated? How, how does this actually get implemented? I had a lot of questions around the vagueness of the language and, and was instructed by city staff, much to the details tonight, of why that language is the way that it is. And, and I felt comfortable with it in the work sessions. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of feedback, and I know, like, some people were at some work sessions and not others, but we've talked about this a lot. And so I feel like my questions have been answered. But as we did go out, and I think as a council, we decided we wanted more feedback from the public, and I've received directly a lot, a lot of that feedback was around being against a homeless ban. And in those conversations, and when I've talked to those people or I've sent emails, that I just clarified that there is no homeless ban, that this is a camping ordinance, and that's what I think that we're talking about. And in those clarifying conversations, people felt much more comfortable with what we were doing, that the intent of what we're doing is to lead with empathy. I know we've all said this a lot, and I don't want to repeat everything, but I think it's important to say, in these conversations, I've brought that up, leading with empathy, treating people humanely. And that once there was that understanding, that that part of our code isn't changing the, the police code, is that right?
Policy.
Policy, the policy of our, of, of RPD, that part doesn't change. I think that there have been, there's confusion that this replaces that, and that like one is in front of the other. And, and the reality is, is that it's not. And I've gotten every confirmation that the goal is to interact with people with compassion, with empathy, treat them humanely, and try to get resources, which is what we do today. That this as an ordinance, yes, it's vague, but it's designed as a backstop so that things don't get out of hand in our community, which no one wants. And every advocate that I've talked to, which is many, have said how dangerous encampments can get and how that is, that can be very problematic. And, and again, one of the things that I brought up very early on in these conversations is, and I, and I understand the, the comments around how this will or could potentially disproportionately impact unhoused or mentally unstable or people having mental health issues. But it, it isn't focused on that, it's for, it's across the board. And so, there was a comment about like, how could anybody do anything? You can't lay in the, I mean, but at the same time, the flip side of that is that like, a, a, a resident of Robbinsdale that lives in a house or an apartment could want to go with their kid and camp in Sanborn Park or Lakeview Terrace, and we don't want that either. They're not parks that are designed for camping. And so I get, I, I understand the rationale behind why so many people are focused on homelessness and, and the issues of people that are, you know, having mental health issues and, and all the varieties of things that, you know, can happen. It, it is true that it applies to everyone equally. And so, I, I've also, I did some digging just to look, I mean, there are other communities that have very similar ordinances. So it's not as though we've jumped out and, you know, we're gonna really be punitive and, and really show everyone how tough we are. It's like, we're, we're joining in a, a group of communities that have used this in, in a similar way, you know, outside of the comments in, in Minneapolis, and, and those are really more encampments than like individuals. But I didn't hear anyone talk about Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center or Plymouth. And they have very similar ordinances to what we're talking about. And so, I guess the one, in addition to all of that, so that, those are some of my ideas on why I support this and how I'm thinking about this. One thing I did want to say, Aaron, in response to, to your comment about repealing, I, I'm very much aligned with Councilmember Blackledge in that I don't envision like a repeal of this. This is more of a like, if we find that there is, that it's, there are issues with the vagueness, this is how I'm thinking about it, is that we would add to it, that we would be able to iterate on what we've created. It wouldn't be like, "Oh, we'll just get rid of this," that it's really more focused on, we need to put more detail. Again, kind of going back to staff's recommendation and all the questions that we had around this vagueness, or at least I know I had, that I feel comfortable with those responses. And we've heard some of them tonight, but, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I just think, I, I really value everyone's feedback, the opinions that have been shared up here tonight. It's really important, and, and I, and I appreciate where you're coming from. I just, the one other thing that I will say is that Robbinsdale is a small city. We have limited resources, and I feel like there's an element of, everything I said in the beginning is true. And so, to go back and change it again is gonna take those very limited resources, and we're gonna spin it over where I feel like we're already in a good place with the language and have heard the reasons why, which doesn't mean that you need to agree, but I am cognizant of the fact that we're gonna involve spending more money on lawyers, we're gonna take up council resources and time that are already limited, and, or, sorry, not council, but city staff resources that are already limited. And so, I know that's not the determining factor, and if I felt like the other part wasn't true, I would definitely be in favor of pushing back and taking more time. But I, I think the initial part of my statement aligns with this piece as well. So I'll leave it at that.
This has been a good discussion, and a long discussion. Is there another comments? Can we move to make a motion?
I mean, I'll just add, just the Councilmember Greenberg's response. I guess my, my, I don't even want to call it an issue, but I guess the thing I'm thinking about when, when you mentioned, you know, not repealing it, but changing, like updating the language as is, in trying to be cognizant about city resources. In my mind, those things take the same amount. I mean, if it's in place or if it isn't in place, language is changing regardless. So I guess I don't, I don't share that concern because in my mind, whether you're updating it later or updating a blank page later, it's the same thing.
Yeah, but I mean, there's already been intention and resources put to making sure that this language is the way that it is for a reason. And, and if there aren't any issues with that language, then I wouldn't see it necessary to change versus we're saying, "We need to redo this process," and, or, or the reasons to not support this are, "We need to redo the process," which isn't just changing the language. It's like, we've gotta go back and involve, again, I, I think it is a little bit different than just saying like, "Blank page" or "down the road." It's like, we, we do have language that has been approved, that is recommended by our staff. And again, that doesn't mean that you need to agree with it, but I feel like there is a reason that it is that way. And if everything works as intended, then we don't need to change it. But I like the idea that we can iterate on it, not necessarily repeal. So, we don't, I, I see what your point is, and I, and I, and I appreciate that. I just, I think it, there is a little bit of some nuance there that's different.
Yeah, that's fair. I think, you know, if we, for some reason, didn't pass this, the language also still exists. You know, that time that we took discussing it and staff prepping it, that would still be all there in the, in the conversations. So, yeah, it's not one-to-one, but it's, I think it's pretty darn close. So I don't, again, don't share that concern.
Okay.
I just, I do want to say something else. I think, to Councilmember Greenberg, this thinking about staff time, I don't, well, staff time and others' time as well, too. I think when we're talking about people, there can never be too much time dedicated to that. And I do, I do want to make sure that that's, that's a, that's a part of the conversation as well, too. Because I don't think we're talking about how do we support and/or engage with community, yeah.
No, and I totally appreciate that. I think, I think it's, sorry to interrupt you, but I think it's, again, if there was an issue that I felt like needed to be addressed, then the timing isn't the factor. It's, that's not, I, it just is a point I want to make that actually aligns with, I, I think we've done a lot of work and we've, I'm in a good place with the way that it is and why I think that. And also worth noting that there are, you know, it's like, resources aren't unlimited. So, I agree. But I did, i- i- if there was a, if I felt like there was a problem that needed to be addressed, like that timing piece, we, we would need, that isn't as relevant. Or that isn't relevant, then, you're right, especially when you're talking about people.
Thank you.
I had another comment, just.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just from the vibe I'm getting from the rest of the council, if this does indeed pass, then I would really ask the majority to direct staff to track these interactions and get some data behind some of this. Because if we are serious, as we've all, I think, said, about being willing to update things, being willing to revisit things, nothing is set in stone, and I totally appreciate that sentiment, and that's how things should be, then we need something to track and to back this up, to inform our decisions in the future. So that's, that's my ask for, for the majority.
I'm gonna ask a question now. Uh, Tim, that asks to track if this becomes an ordinance, is something RPD could put into policy? Could it not? We could ask them to do that, or we need to have a session up here about it?
Mr. Mayor, council, what I'd recommend is having that discussion at a work session. Part of the challenge with that, there's a lot of data privacy issues. So at the individual level, there are certain protections that individuals certainly have that make it challenging to, in a circumstance where it's almost anecdotal, things we can and cannot review. But we'd be happy to present what we can, and as a council, you can share with us what you would like tracked that we're able to share with you. I just don't think this is the venue to do it here tonight.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
Oh.
Well, he was just, if I could just respond to that. Um, thank you, councilmembers. Um, yeah, because I just want to just remind everybody that there is no data for this. So it's like, we're implementing, seems like we're about to implement- So it's like, we're implementing, seems like we're about to implement a policy for which we don't have any kind of, you know, printout or information as to what this actually would be addressing, and it's, that's a concern that I don't share in my comments, but I just wanted to add that for the, for the record as well and for consideration of, of a council, too, just that we're, you know, lacking, I think, we got public feedback, we've had our council discussions, we've had staff input, all fantastic, we don't have that hard data though, so just want to call that out.
And the reason why we don't have the data is because it's not a crime to be unhoused, and so RPD doesn't collect that data, correct?
But they would have stuff about, who, who stuff do they have, you know, is this John Doe's tent, is this, you know, Adam Smith's tent, right? They're going to, they need to have that kind of tracking, and that's.
That's a symbol to know whose it is.
Yeah, exactly, and I think the work session would flush this out, so.
Yes, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Wagner, I think, yeah, just getting a list of what you would like tracked, we'd be happy to provide what we can and can't provide, and then going forward, certainly tracking for you.
Really quick.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Thank you. Just to that point, we're creating an ordinance, there will be some data around if it's been, if there's been a violation of the ordinance, so we should have number of incidents if, if this goes into place, correct? At the, at the base level, there will be data that supports how many times this was used.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Greenberg, that's fair that if we would be able to quantitate the number of times, whatever this code section, section nine thirty would be violated, we could do that in six months, twelve months, the goal is zero, but we can certainly, we can share that number out.
Okay, great. Any more comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Blackledge.
Like I said, this is, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Parisian, can I ask you a question intentionally? As we go, as we're in this process, and this is unfair we ask you this now, but how would you have gone about soliciting, like, how would you have gone about this process differently? I think is sitting, it's, that's sitting with me, and I want to make sure I understand.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Blackledge. I think some of the learnings from being on council and where we have put a decision in place and then come back to it, I think the parks naming policy could be an example of that, where we as a council recognized that the process wasn't what we wanted, and I feel similarly about this process. And the, what I would like to see differently, had we had the opportunity to do this again, would be to involve groups sooner, so having, you know, for example, we received the public comment from the HRC in the last couple of weeks. We received more feedback tonight, and that process, I feel, should have happened much sooner than the second reading vote. And there, there's a reason why so many people are here tonight, there's a reason why this discussion is so robust and important, and so I encourage us to consider giving the appropriate time to this process and not to rush it for the sake of, you know, we're, it's on the agenda, we have to pass the second reading tonight. So I would have liked to see a more proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. Again, I think this came up due to some isolated incident, instances, and that's unfortunate, but, you know, we, we have rightfully put a close magnifying glass on the policy language, and I'm trying to bring a magnifying glass to the process itself. So again, I think what it's, what Spinnardi said, it doesn't negate all of the work and resources and my appreciation for all of the discussion up until this point. I think there are some specifics that the Human Rights Commission in particular have pointed out, where we can add specificity to the language to strengthen the clarity of the policy, and we as policymakers have that responsibility to be very careful with that process, especially when there is clearly a lot of community input. Thank you for that question.
Yes. I really do appreciate that, and everyone else can't see this, but there's, there's a couple of different questions that we have up here for council, and they state for which people, at what cost, and what good. And yeah, I, I, yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. This has been a robust conversation, a difficult conversation, and one that's involved members of the community, members of the HRC. We received comments prior to this point. We had a work session, we've discussed this now a couple of times, we've, we've gotten to this point, and I think it's time to decide if we're going to make a motion. And so I'm going to ask the council, is there a motion to approve an ordinance amending section nine thirty?
The second reading.
Sorry, is there, well, we just held the second reading, so I'm sorry, what am I doing, Tim?
Mr. Mayor, Council, so staff's recommendation is that you hold a second reading, essentially you've done that, a motion could be made to approve the ordinance as described under recommendations in your memo.
That's why I have you. All right, so is there a motion to approve an ordinance amending section nine thirty of the Robinsdale City Code relating to camping on public property?
So moved.
I will second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
May I request a roll call vote, please?
You may.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
I have a question about that. Is, in this roll call vote, I'm, no, continue, sorry.
Councilmember Blackledge.
Nay.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Parisian?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was you, I was going in order.
Councilmember Parisian?
No.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Mayor Sutton?
Aye.
Okay. So we move on?
Motion doesn't pass.
Motion does not pass. All right, moving on to presentations.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm going to go ahead and segue for you. Presentation, item A, Green Step Award, I'm going to go ahead and invite the Sustainability Coordinator, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kayla Kurtz, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator here for the City of Robinsdale. And tonight, I just want to briefly present to you our Green Steps four and five award for the year of 2025. The Minnesota Green Step Cities Program is a voluntary challenge assistance and recognition program that helps communities achieve their sustainability and quality of life goals. It's a free program managed by a public-private partnership, those organizations can be found on the bottom of this certificate that is copied into your packet. It's a really helpful visual to see just truly how robust the program is and the support of the organizations that we receive. So it's a program managed by this public-private partnership, it's based upon a menu of twenty-nine optional best practices, each best practice can be implemented as decided by elected officials, staff, and community members, and then by completing those actions, your community, our community is awarded steps one, two, three, four, and five. So the City of Robinsdale joined the Green Step Cities Program in August of 2019 simply by designating a city staff person to be the Green Step City Coordinator and adopting a formal council resolution. Since 2019, the city has been working to implement numerous best practices to progress from step one to step two in June of 2020, and then step three in June of 2023. Moving on from step three is steps four and five, and the primary purpose of those steps is for participants to gather data from which they can compare over time. So to achieve step four, communities must measure and report a minimum number of core and optional metrics from the previous calendar year, and to achieve step five, communities must demonstrate improvement upon three eligible metrics from one data year to the next. So for the first time, Robinsdale achieved step four last year in June of 2024, and we are excited to share that Robinsdale has officially maintained step four for another calendar year and achieved, achieved step five in the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program as of June twenty-fifth, 2025. And this recognition occurs each June at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, in which they recognize all of the new and continuing Green Step Cities Program. So at the end of June, I had the pleasure, along with Councilmember Greenberg, of accepting our step five and step four award at the conference. So I just want to call out a couple of highlights to, from, that we reported on in 2024, a lot of which, the more significant ones were surrounding renewable energy, thanks to a couple of new installations, the eighty kilowatt array on our water treatment plant that produces over a hundred and thirty-five megawatts of electricity each year, as well as just an overall increase in our purchased and produced renewable energy. So just a brief message, and excited to share with you our step four and step five award. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I may just real briefly offer my thanks to staff, certainly a team effort, but Ms. Kurtz has been spearheading this for the last number of years, that comes by no certain happenstance, a ton of effort goes into that, so I offer my thanks. I'd also suggest to the council, if they're up for it, taking a quick photo, this is a good one for the socials and whatnot.
Sure. Thank you, nice work.
Thank you.
Need to start clearing the slacks.
All right, we're chasing down. Can we move on without him, or do we have to wait?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council, let's go ahead and jump in, he can cut in midstream.
It's a long night, all right. Next item, City of Robinsdale Annual Comprehensive Financial Report 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, a member of the city council, city manager, city annual contract with independent certified public accounting firm, so that the city annual comprehensive financial report, this year's audit was performed by L.B. Carlson, previously known as MMQR, the merger in the beginning of January 2024. The audit for the, the report for 2024 has received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that the auditor can provide. In addition, the auditor has performed a review for the city compliance with the Minnesota state statutes and have issues require reporting compliance. Finally, the auditor have provided you with the management reports, special purpose reports for the result of operation for 2024. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Aaron Nielsen, CPE, who is the audit partner on the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff.
Good evening.
Citizens online watching this and here, I'm pleased to be here this evening, it is the culmination of the wrap-up of the annual audit, so it is the end of our process of presenting the audit and results of that. So as mentioned, I'm new to using our new firm name of L.B. Carlson, we merged with the firm of L.B. Carlson on January first of 2025, and, and so we're pleased to be a part of the merged firm and better able to serve our clients. So as mentioned, we've issued three reports tonight, the annual comprehensive financial report that has our opinion in it, the special purpose reports, and the management report. The PowerPoint presentation I have here is really just to keep the camera off me and put the focus on just the PowerPoint that, as we move our way through it and keep us all on the same page. I'm happy to stay as long as you want to go through it, the annual comprehensive financial report is a very long document, a lot of information in there, and I don't want you to think I'm discounting it by running through the slides. I'm really pleased with the results we're presenting this evening, and I'm happy to go through any of the details you'd like at the end of my presentation. So with that, I'll start out, as mentioned, I am Aaron Nielsen with L.B. Carlson, the lead partner for the audit of the City of Robinsdale for the year ended December thirty-first, 2024. We'll get right to it. As independent auditors for the city, we have issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements that as of year end, December thirty-first before the year then ended, the financial statements fairly present the financial position and results of operations for the year then ended. I see a lane here, so I hope I'm not taking anybody's thunder, but I have commented in my notes here that this, with the issuance of last year's report and the review of that report, it's been forty-five years where you've received that certificate of excellence in financial reporting, and again, this year's report has been prepared in a manner to allow you to receive that award again, and will be submitted for that award. The next portion of the slide you see here is the internal control and compliance over the financial audit under government auditing standards. We're pleased to report we did not have any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we have included as material weaknesses, we had no instances of non-compliance to share with you with the results of our audit. My next slide, we look at the Minnesota League Compliance Audit, there's seven broad categories subject to the annual audit for the city's audit for this past year, in the past several years. As you can see, we're pleased to report that there were no instances of non-compliance with the Minnesota laws and regulations as we've tested and reported new findings with the current year audit. I've noted one other comment, which we generally would if you have funds with a deficit financial position, and we've commented on in the past, it's not uncommon when you have projects that start and then recover the resources over multiple years through TIF financing or other means, but it's important to make sure, I know the council's well aware of them, but managing that and, and making sure that is part of the future budgetary plans, financial plans for the city. So with that, I'm going to move through some more of the, just the details that you find in that annual comprehensive financial report. What I have on the slide before you right now at the moment is the governmental funds, so it does not include the utility operations of the organization. As you can see, when you look at the governmental funds, general funds, special revenue funds, capital project, your debt service funds, you can see that overall, there was an increase of about $2 million this past year after the results of operations. Couple of comments, you can see the top half, we look at all of the fund balance components. Couple of comments, you can see the top half, we look at all of the fund balance components and the various classifications, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, unassigned. And then a, an additional reconciliation splits them by the particular fund that they're contained within. As you can see, there was an increase in restricted fund balances past year, largely made up of local housing aid that was received by the city, community development, and timing of some unspent proceeds that have particular requirements on how those resources are spent. As you can see, committed fund balance has seen, we reported a decrease in that area. And then there's an increase in that assigned component. Part of that is due just simply because of how resources were shifted with resolution from committing them to then simply assigning those resources as of year end. You've also adopted a fund balance for 2025 where your deficit spending equity in the general fund, so that becomes a natural assignment where we're saying you have set those dollars aside, they're not available for future spending as they're planned with the current year budget. The unassigned fund balance, you can see there's a decrease there of 832. It closely aligns with the change in the general fund, as you can see down below with the decrease of 944,000. And that really was with the approved transfer that was made near, right after year end. And you still are maintaining that fund balance policy of the general fund, and I'll comment on that later with the general fund. Moving on to the next slide, we do have a couple of slides. The general fund is your primary operating fund. As you can see here, the general fund has maintained a stable financial position over several years. I'm positive this would go back even 10 years if I carried that many years back in the graph here. You can see the overall size of the organization as measured by expenditures continues to grow. The decrease you see in the cash in the fund balance again is directly related to that year-end transfer that was approved impacting 2024. Looking at the general fund revenues, we've got property taxes, license permits. The major source categories this past year total revenue in the general fund amounted to $14.1 million. As a conservative auditor accountant, I would say you came in favorably with your actual results coming in better than anticipated overall by about 2.8%. The other comment we generally make with this slide is you can see that function or the requirement of where your resources are coming from, that concentration with property taxes making up about 62.3% this past year, followed by intergovernmental revenue making up 23.6%. And then the remaining three categories accounting for about 14.1%. Just that breakdown of where your resources are coming from. Similar slide on expenditures, as you can see, we show budget to actual, the concentration of spending for public safety, which is common with Minnesota cities being the largest source of spending within the general fund. This past year, you can see each one of your general functions here spent within the appropriations approved by council coming in less than anticipated. The larger areas, public safety and public works saw the largest variances. Public safety with some open positions, public works as well. And then the mild winter, we're finding with many of our cities contributing to some savings and road safety services that we didn't have to incur with that mild winter. Shifting gears with the, away from the governmental funds, now looking at what we interpret as enterprise funds or commonly for your citizens' year utility operations. You can see, we talk about them as net position. These funds are under the FLECK rule, so we capture all of the assets, all of the resources, which is not the same with general governmental funds where we're focusing on current short-term resources of those for spendable resources to get to that net spendable amount. As you can see here with your utility funds or those enterprise funds, you saw an increase of about $4.6 million over the prior year with that change. The other thing that's unique with utility funds, as you can see, is that heavy concentration in their equity within the infrastructure to operate, to provide the services to citizens in the water, sewer lines, et cetera, holding ponds, and thereby included in that net investment in capital assets. You can see seeing the biggest increase there. So what that's telling me is you're investing in your infrastructure, you're paying down the related obligations at a faster pace than the, the debt you're paying down at a faster pace than they're being depreciated or utilized under normal circumstances. The total funds, you can see each one of the operations saw an increase with the slight exception of the liquor operation showing a slight decrease in that position this past year. And I guess here's where I was anticipating picking up the pace. So we've got about five years of data where we show your operations, the utility fund, you can see for water utility, there's been an increase the last couple of years, but that's been that improvement in the infrastructure and then the additional costs with the water treatment plant. But you can see a stable financial position compared to the prior year as well. The sanitary sewer utility fund, you can see there was a slight increase in revenues, more significant increase in expenses, so a slight dip in that current operating income compared to the prior year, but again, showing positive operating results each one of these years. The storm sewer utility, I really, my comment is that you can see it was a very consistent operation '24 compared to '23. And we move on to the solid waste removal, again, having positive operating results each year. We found of many cities incurring additional expenses and having to increase rates. You can see that year increase in revenues supporting that increase in expenses this past year, a very similar operating income compared to 2023. The liquor operations fund, I know we've talked about in recent years, the, some of the changes that have happened there, their fund, their equity getting pretty lean this past year, you've intentionally reduced the transfer out of that operation. I know it's one that's important to the city and has been under review to make sure we can keep, continue to keep positive operations there. We are pleased to see, you still do see that gross profit at the top line, they're maintaining that same goal of that percentage over cost of sales. And so you continue to meet that percentage increase or that percentage goal this past year. I might have jumped to here. Broadway Court, similar operating income compared to prior year. Again, an adjustment to revenues to match the cost increases to support that. And then Deputy Register is the last utility fund that we've included here. As you can see, is similar operations. They actually had a growth and bump up in the volume of activity with operating revenues increasing this past year. And then to wrap up our slide here, we've, we simply get, we simply get to this point where I mentioned governmental funds who are on a modified accrual basis or are focused on those statements can be quite different when you look on a fund basis to an entity-wide position, because we're not capturing capital assets on that governmental fund statements. We capture that only at that entity-wide level of governmental funds. I'll jump over the business type activities, but I'll start with that. As you can see, again, those business type activities align exactly with your utility or enterprise funds, and you saw an increase of $4.6 million. So both of the business type enterprise are under the same accrual basis of accounting, and therefore the dollar amounts match there. When we were talking about the governmental funds, I believe we're talking about an increase of about $2 million. But when we consolidate all of the governmental funds and then bring in the internal service funds, which benefited from that transfer of the general fund this past year, overall, you're seeing an increase of about $3.1 million to governmental and your government-wide financial activities. So really, to me, that means your short-term decisions are equating to long-term, the long-term decisions and improving the financial position overall of the city when you compare that from year to year. Some will be concerned with changes where your fund balances go down, but that could simply mean we had a major street project and we used resources of a construction fund and spent them down. It was fully intentional, so it looked like a decrease there. The entity-wide long-term presentation would show you, you maintained assets and actually enhanced them with your infrastructure, trading cash for capital assets. So maybe a closing comment on the general fund. You did continue to meet your fund balance policy goal, able to have positive operations, make that transfer at year end. I think it was over $2 million that was approved to transfer out. Well, I know it wasn't, it was over $2 million this past year. And your policy is to maintain a 40 to 50% unassigned fund balance of subsequent year's expenditures. You're right in the middle of that policy at year end, 45.4, I believe it is, is the percentage you're at. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do want to thank your staff and the team. It goes beyond the finance department when you're putting together a 200-page document like this. The accounting and auditing isn't getting any easier with the new standards. And I know you were working through some turnover this past year too. So we appreciate the efforts of the staff to help us get through that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions, comments? Yes. Council member Parisian.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for sticking around as well. A couple of bar graphs that you shared for my benefit and possibly for the public benefit too. The purple bars that are indicated by transfer out. For someone new to learning these terms, transfer out, is it safe to assume that that's a transfer into the general fund? Or if you could talk a little bit about the function of that piece?
I'll start, maybe I can turn it over to.
Thank you.
The city manager, if he wants to expand on it. But as long as I've been working with the city, it's been important to kind of point out some of the areas where you've had profitable operations or some of the things the city is able to offer. So they wanted to call out the transfers, councils wanted to see that. In the past, the liquor store operation has helped support some of the general fund operations, helped manage the levy, but it did identify that. I think some of it went to parks, if I'm not mistaken, to help future park improvements as well. So it really was just to call that out. So it's not something that is required of that individual fund or not an operation of that fund, it's simply a, an approval by council that through the budget process or a separate transfer action to say, we want to utilize some of these resources for a different purpose. And then they move to the fund where you're going to utilize them for that park improvement or help manage levy changes. Or, you know, in the past where we've seen losses to LGA, it's probably helps support some of that in those cases.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could ask a follow-up question too, then this is likely for Tim. It looks like that the transfers out stay very consistent year over year, with the exception of the 2024, not on the slide that's being shown now. But it looks like there was a, a pretty significant decrease to the transfers out. Is there, I guess, short question, is there any concern about that? Or are we on track?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Council member Parisian, I think the biggest thing to call out over maybe what's displayed here, the five-year history, we've seen a dip in revenue generally at the liquor store. A lot of outside forces to that. Everything from people are consuming less to modeling of staffing coming out of COVID. You know, we really saw a boom when people were staying home and having their six-pack or bottle of wine with their dinner at their dinner table versus when people went back out. That cycle has taken a little bit of takeout, or a bit of time to make backup for. You do have your monthly report from the liquor store showing positive numbers here through last month, so I think that's good indication. That fund alone for many years, I believe, was in the sum of like $200,000 going directly to the park system. So as that dipped, that was significant much, significant enough to get caught up on. As Mr. Nielsen noted, really the philosophical desire of the council is to see what these were. So no requirement, those are things we certainly manage from year to year. But I think what you're seeing is largely a result of that.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Any other questions, comments?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Just for the layman, which is what I am when it comes to this kind of deep analysis of accounting things. Are you, was this report, are you kind of just making sure all of our numbers add up correctly? You're not necessarily saying that we're doing balanced budgeting or anything like that, right? Can you just maybe reiterate the general purpose of this? So someone like me can understand it? Thank you.
Or, or maybe I'll clarify kind of the role as the independent auditor coming in. You know, as mentioned by the city manager, you're getting monthly reports over and over throughout the fiscal year. I think the, you know, our role as independent auditors, you can see I'm very cautious in how I talk about the act for is your document. In that document, the opinion is mine, saying it's fairly stated. So it's your staff summarizing the results of the transactions, putting that information together. And then our audit procedures are to come in and see, do we find those numbers the same as they've been presenting them to you? Do they, do they actually match trial balances? The cash number and the financial statement supported by investments and cash balances at local institutions? So those are the tests we're doing. And so we're saying they're fairly presented or, you know, I use the term a clean opinion to hopefully make it clearer for more people to understand that we, we think the financial statements are fair. But early in my career, it was pointed out, I'm not telling you how you spent your money or where you chose to utilize your resources. I'm just saying it's accurate as to what the document is saying. So what I think is important to take away from it for newer council members or public, you know, getting involved in government is, you know, do you get the clean opinion? Now, I have rarely not provided a clean opinion. They don't want me coming here to say I didn't at any council, right? So we generally will come to consensus where it's fairly stated. But if it wasn't, I'd say that, I can, can do that. But you're meeting your policies, that fund balance goals is important. You're going beyond the minimum requirements with your certificate of achievement, financial reporting. I think those are all key components. I know sometimes people get concerned if I issue a finding in legal compliance and I, you know, I, I see it all the time. I mean, hey, we go to our audits and we have them. And the first time doesn't concern me generally ever, depending on the finding, right? But a late payment or things like that will happen or something was missed in a, you know, oh, we forgot to tick this or, you know, whatever I'm looking for in that real strict checklist for bid process. But if you respond to it and you correct it, it's a human nature, it'll happen. So that's what I look for when we, you know, provide findings or suggestions. How do you react to them? And, you know, as you can see, we didn't have any findings. It's very important, your staff believe in it that they don't want the findings. It's important to them. But they also know that I've got a place where I have to report it. And we've had findings in the past. And you, the council has directed, led, and management has always seemed to take that important and take that to heart and make the change to clearance. That's what I would be looking for, I guess, long answer.
Gotcha. And Mayor, if I could have a follow-up too? Thank you. That kind of answers most of my next question, but just to be, maybe if I can just talk through it. So if there is a discrepancy or what have you, then there's an opportunity for city staff to work with you or like answer some, some way to account for that before you make the opinion? Or do you include, even if it's, do you, I guess, are you kind of looking to get things cleaned up and justified first? Or do you kind of include everything, even if there is rectifications in your analysis?
Sure. My only challenging answering is I would say there's very degrees of discrepancies, right? If it were a trivial amount.
Sure.
That we'd work together and that isn't a, it doesn't materially mistake the financial statements. If we found a significant accounts payable that would not have been reported unless you had the annual audit, that could be indicative of weakness in internal controls. And, and the council or the management or the accounting staff are working with, may totally agree with that. Oh, it slipped through the crack, we had turnover or this, you know, it was sitting on somebody's desk and didn't get here when it should have, right? And they would readily record the payables, so your statements would be accurate. However, with the government auditing standard requirements, your management report, I'd probably be sharing with you, you know, yes, we didn't have any, the financial statements are clean, but we had a material account payable we found. And that may or may not be a finding, depending on the significance of it. But if it were anything more than trivial, I'd probably be sharing it with you publicly.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that, that's helpful. That's helpful.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you. Great work. It is relieving to see the good work that is happening here in the finance department. So congratulations to you, DF, for running a tight ship. So thank you. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I can move. I'll do it. I'll move to acknowledge the receipt of the city's audited annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2024, the auditor's management report and special purpose audit reports as submitted by LB Card Carlson, LLP, and direct staff to distribute the report to other agencies as required.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. All right, accepted. Thank you. Moving on to item C under Presentations, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. For the forty-five consecutive year, City has been awarded a certificate of achievement for excellent financial reporting for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2023. This award is given by the Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, to government who meet certain stringent set of criteria. The award was established in 1945, and it's designed to recognize and encourage excellence in financial reporting by state and local governments throughout the U.S. and Canada. City of Robbinsdale received its first award for the year ending December 31st, 1929. Just to add, it's very critical for us for the actuary report, so it's part of the actuary report. Second, it's important when we apply for any bond or for debt issuance, it's good so we can get lower interest rate. So it's good that City maintains that.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I might add on to just briefly. A segue from Mr. Nielsen's presentation, it's again, not just by happenstance, for you as a council, you received this award. Certainly, you've got a dedicated finance director, a dedicated finance team, a team altogether that contribute to the process. It's cumbersome, it's a lot to make sure that we do things right, but we take a lot of pride in that. And not just because Mr. Toomey was nice enough to put on a seat tonight, I'd suggest that you pose for a photo with this award as well.
Absolutely. All right. Good work.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We need a bigger wall for all of our awards.
Right. Next up is a public hearing, so resolution adopting, street reconstruction planned, and authorizing a preliminary bond.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I believe Mr. Toomey will be back in just a moment, and I think we have somebody here that's going to help walk through. I do want to call out, he can certainly provide you a bit more detail, but a bit unique to this item, we're asking sort of a bundled package here to open, host, and close three separate public hearings, and then by way of motion and in order to waive and waive the reading, excuse me, in order the adoption of four resolutions. We can certainly take by individual action. We again will present as a bulk, but I'll let Mr. Toomey jump in here.
Yeah, in December 3rd, 2024, the City Council adopted the 2025 budget and approved 2025-2034 Street Reconstruction Plan and document and 2025 adopted budget and CIP plan for the issuance of general obligation bond to fund portion of street reconstruction. On February 4th, 2025, the City Council approved resolution declaring intent to reimburse So whole goal, like foregoing for bonding, that instead of like hitting the citizen by high levy tax, that we can spread this infrastructure over ten, fifteen years, kind of make it easier for everything, and especially like we have aging infrastructure, it's better way to finance it instead to have higher levy, to lower the levy to the amount that it will be sufficient to pay for the bond. So this is kind of strategy we've been working with Baker and Terry, our consultant, for maybe more than ten years, which also important that we, for the size of the city, we were able to maintain the AAA plus rating, which is the highest we can reach for the size of our city. We try as much as possible in working between finance, city manager, and public work to look to the needs and what staff can accomplish within the year between street construction, equipment, the public work, new building, some equipment for fire department, what the best way to finance it, the best timing, when we need the money, the cash, which first affects the investment, affects the firm. So our goal from this session that we can get the bond proceed by August 19th, and I have Elizabeth from Baker today will go through the process.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you've had a lot of weighty issues in front of you tonight, so I don't want to say bonds are light, because they're not, but hopefully we'll make this relatively straightforward. Included in your packet is something that starts by looking like this, and that's an overview of the bond issue, including some of the steps and timelines as reflected. So I'm going to try to be thorough and fast. I don't know, let's see, let's see if I can manage it or not. So just an overview of the bond sale. What we're proposing is one bond issue for $8.65 million, and included in that are six purposes. So one, public works, building improvements, and that's about 1.5 million. I'm going to round instead of giving you exact dollars. If you want, I'm happy to do that, but just trying to, trying to give you the big picture. Street improvements, $600,000. Infrastructure for Sanborn Park, or whatever that is to be renamed. Equipment certificates, about 2.5 million. Water Tower Two improvements and Storm Sewer improvements of $3 million. Each of these has an individual authority to approve it, which is, like I say, outlined in the packet that we gave you. And included in that, we need to pass the resolutions and ordinances discussed tonight. The CIP approval of the capital improvement plan is what allows us to issue the public building borrowing, the public building work or public works building borrowing. The public hearing for abatement of ten parcels allows for the park improvements, and the street improvement plan allows for, surprisingly enough, street improvement bonds. And all of these are secured by a general obligation pledge of the city, and that's saying your full faith and credit, so you will do what you need to do in order to pay these bonds. That being said, the two utilities projects, Stormwater and the Water Tower Two, will actually be paid from utility rates, but will also carry that general obligation pledge. And one of the advantages of the general obligation pledge is that is the highest and best credit of the city and allows for the lowest interest rates. There will be about $630,000 annually of levy impact to this borrowing. Like I say, some of that defrayed by utility costs, ten-year bonds, and they will be eligible in 2034 to call either with new bonds or with any, any cash the city has. On page five of that packet highlights the timeline that we're going through in addition to tonight agreeing to sell the bonds and passing those different authorizations that we talked about, the capital improvement plan, the abatement, and the street improvement plan, with a sale on August 19th, and then ultimately receiving funds on September 18th. So that was a lot in a little time. Happy to go into any depth on anything that anybody wants to talk about.
Comments, questions? The council.
Thank you. I'll just extend my thanks for you being here and walking us through this process. Appreciate your willingness to answer questions. I don't have any, just want to share our appreciation. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the overview. The bonds, when we seek them out, who's buying these, right? Is it, I think I kind of know the answer, but like, could a resident in Robbinsdale that's so altruistic that wanted to contribute to their own city's projects, are they able to buy into these or who's buying these bonds?
That's a great question. Actually, I sold bonds last night for Bloomington, and we had a call this morning from a Bloomington resident saying, how do I get my hands on those bonds? So the question is well, well-placed and certainly among the ones we get frequently. The way that we sell the bonds is we go to a competitive sale, so we put out an official statement, which has information about the city with regard to your finances, what's happening in your tax base, development, information about the city staff, information about property collections, there's a, there's a variety of pieces of information that we work with city staff on, and of course, about the bonds themselves. That goes out to the market. We use something called Uniplatform that goes out to the investor community. Typically, in our bond sales, we'll see about 500 unique emails review that official statement, so that is folks from both investment banks, and we'll get to those in just a second, as well as investors, so like Cit Investments, if that rings a bell for you, they're downtown Minneapolis, Minneapolis Investment Firm. So that'll be a number of people from all those firms reviewing the official statement, making decisions about whether or not they want to purchase the bonds. At the point of our competitive sale, which happens in August, we'll put out that official statement, and then we'll actually have an online, what my children like to call an auction, I always say it's a bid, but my children call it an auction, where we'll say, we'd like to sell these Robbinsdale bonds, and investment banks, so that's your Baird, that's your Citibank, that's your JP Morgan, will go in and make a bid, and they say, we will pay you this much, and this is the interest rate we require, you know, we'll buy the bonds, and this is the interest rate we require in return. That firm then in turn goes and sells those to individual and institutional investors. So if you have an account with, with a brokerage house, you can put in an order to buy City of Robbinsdale bonds. So that's, it's a long, it's maybe a longer answer than you wanted, but yes, Robbinsdale residents can buy them either by contacting who it was that is purchased them from the city directly or working through their investment advisors or investment, you know, online, online brokerage accounts.
And it's the follow-up.
I hope that got to the kernel of what you wanted, because it was long.
Yes, thank you, and it goes into my next question. So the interest that we're proposing on this, I'm seeing a couple of different numbers. Could you just reiterate what those are? I might have missed it if you said it already.
Yep, absolutely. So if you look on page, let me get, combination of my glasses on the right page to get to orient you here. So if you look on page nine, it's labeled page nine of the packet, you will see, that's an overview, and that is all of the bonds that are included here, excuse me, it's the one bond that has the six purposes. So this is kind of the summary, the big picture page. At the bottom of page nine, you'll see that it says true interest cost, very bottom line, three, eight, nine percent. That's what we're anticipating to be the true interest cost, as it's labeled, which is a present value calculation, looking at that ten-year debt repayment and including the fees that you're paying on the bonds. There's a couple of different fees, mostly for those underwriters who buy the bonds and then remarket them. And that's how we award the bonds. When you have this competitive sale, your underwriter will bid, like I say, an interest rate. So the lowest true interest cost will be the winning bidder. So this 3.87, I took my glasses off, 3.897, is what we are expecting at this moment based on what we understand of the market. But as I'm sure you can imagine, the municipal market moves every day, as do the equities markets. So we take a long-range look, we understand what's happening in the market, we make our educated expectation and present that to you. We'll work with your finance staff as we move closer to sale date to update that information. You all may remember in the beginning of April, there was a lot of market disruption as tariffs were announced and people were uncertain what that meant. We had a lot of movement in the municipal market at that time, and when we had clients who were issuing bonds, we worked very closely with them to talk about whether or not that was the right market to issue into. So while we have a sale date that's planned and we have an interest rate that's expected, we have to be responsive to what's going on in the market, so we will continue to have that dialogue. To be perfectly frank, we try to be reasonably conservative. What we don't want to do is give you an interest rate that's today, that's the very skinniest, narrowest interest rate, realizing that over the next month or so, interest rates can change a lot. So we give a little bit of, a little bit of room for market movement, and so that allows that the market will move and the interest rate and the expected debt service payment will still be within the finance department's plan. Quite often, if we have a good sale, we might come in under what we projected, and we will also update you all, today's Tuesday, we'll sell on a Tuesday, that means, you all meet on Tuesdays, we'll update you all the week before, just where we, where we see interest rates and what to expect. Yesterday with Bloomington, we sold two issues, they sold sales tax bonds, we came in right about where we expected on their general obligation bonds that they sold yesterday, we came in, I think, 20 basis points lower. So, you know, it depends on what is happening in the market, it depends on, I don't know how sharp our pencils are maybe the week before, I don't know, but we usually are pretty good unless there's something unexpected that happens in the market. Like I say, those tariffs are a real good example of something unexpected.
So when you, is there like a, you get kind of a sense of like a ceiling that if you get close to it, that's when you talk to staff again, or are you kind of, and this could also be a question for Tim, too, but once you're directed to execute on this, do you, or do you just kind of get, you just want to, you want to fund the project, so you kind of get whatever interest rate you can get, or is there a limit to, to what you can stomach?
Yeah, so yes and no, and yes and no, there's all sorts of complications in there. We're having a conversation back and forth. Like I say, if we see an unusual market, you know, I would say a week, week and a half out, if the market is unusual, the conversations start, right? So we want to have a conversation back and forth of, do you have an amount of debt service that you can afford? Is there something that's unaffordable? And we're running, we're running scenarios and looking at modeling. There are max pars, par meaning the amount of the bonds, try not to be too slangy, included in these resolutions, so we, well, that has, that's the actual amount of the bonds, it doesn't have to do with interest rates. Sometimes there's actions that have to do with interest rates, there aren't any in this case. So it really is a question of two things. One, is what's happening in the market unusual? So I think that the tariffs are a great example of something where we were talking to clients and saying, this is a disruption that there is very good reason to believe will be over in two, three weeks, right? We didn't know that for sure, and we obviously had some hard conversations with clients about whether or not it was the right time to issue bonds. But other times we say, you know, interest rates are going up, but they're going up for more sort of enduring structural reasons, and so you could, you know, I've had clients say, well, like, if we wait, can it get better? And it could get better and it could get worse, right? So you have to look out, you say, do we need the money? And as you referenced, is this project something that needs cash flow now? And, you know, are we ready to go? And fundamentally, our advice to clients is, when you have projects and when you need to spend money, is the right time to issue bonds. Excepting, of course, unusual market events. So interestingly enough, nobody pulled, pulled their bond sales during the tariffs that we worked with, and actually, everybody came out quite, quite nicely. But nonetheless, there was some conversation about, you could wait two weeks and sell if you feel like you want to take, take that option, but I know we had one client who really needed the money, so that, you know, trumps everything, and they ended up having quite a few bidders and a good interest rate, and another one who just said, we've been working on this so long, let's, let's go. But nonetheless, there was some conversation about you could wait two weeks and sell if you feel like you want to take, take that option. But I know we had one client who really needed the money, so that, you know, trumps everything. And they ended up having quite a few bidders and a good interest rate. And another one who just said, we've been working on this so long, let's, let's go. So it's ultimately a call for staff in conjunction with you all.
Great. Thank you for all those answers.
I, I'm delighted that you asked questions I had the answers to. So you can ask as many of those as you want.
Any other questions?
Just have a general comment.
Great answers. Yes, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yeah, I just want to kind of state my support for this funding initiative here and the way we're going about it. Kind of in the years past, the one thing I think I've picked up on is it's, it's, it's good to kind of get a big chunk of this out in one go because you save money if you're trying to, you know, really piecemeal things, you know, if you're doing a five hundred thousand dollar bond here and then next week you gotta do another seven hundred fifty thousand dollar bond. I mean, it doesn't make sense when you think about fees and the cost of executing all of those things. So while the number is quite large, it is going towards a good purpose. And we have the purposes lined out in the resolution and in the packet. So I think Robinsdale residents should peruse those and see where this bonded money will be going towards. Because as we know, infrastructure needs constant, needs constant work and that's what it's going towards. So yeah, I just wanted to share that, those thoughts and thank you to everybody that got this together in front of us, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Then are we opening up to hold a public hearing, receive comments on the city's proposed street reconstruction plan through twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I apologize for the bit of work you have in front of you that would entertain a motion, second and approval for each of the three public hearings. You would close each one thereafter. And then the same for the four resolutions as detailed in your recommendation.
So I'll move that we hold a public hearing to receive comments on the city's proposed street reconstruction plan, twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty-four.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, public hearing is open. As many comments?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, that is closed. Let's go again.
Keep going, yep. I'll move to hold a public hearing to receive comments on the city's proposed capital improvement plan, otherwise known as the CIP, for twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-four.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, that's, public hearing is open.
Yep, I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing to receive.
Oh, if you want to close this one.
Let's close this one.
Close it. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay.
All right.
Number three.
Okay, hold the public, I make a motion to hold a public hearing to receive comments on property tax abatement bonds.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, that public hearing is open. Does anybody want to talk now? Still nobody, all right.
Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That's closed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive the reading and order the adoption of the twenty twenty-five abatement resolution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That passes, all right.
So I will make a motion to waive the reading and order the adoption of the twenty twenty-five street reconstruction plan resolution.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right. That has been passed, all right.
I will move that we waive the reading and order the adoption of the twenty twenty-five CIP resolution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, passed.
All right, I move that we waive the reading and order for the adoption of the GO twenty twenty-five A authorizing resolution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That passes. I do have a question. I hope somebody was taking good notes. Did we waive the abatement resolution? Yeah, that was the first one we.
Yeah, I skipped. I went out, I went out of order.
Great, thanks. All right, perfect. Moving on. I'm just getting back to my agenda here. So we did old business, new business. Sandboard Building Architecture Firm.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm going to give you a brief introduction here. We're cruising right along, get ten to ten. Try to be brief. Certainly if you've got questions, comments or concerns, staff is happy to respond, including Mr. Basics, who's sitting quietly in the back here till the bitter end. Want to note that the Sandborne Park Building has long surpassed its useful lifespan. Some years ago, the city went out to the community, asked for feedback, you know, both, both directly to the facility that exists, to the park more as a whole. Over those next few years, throwing COVID, different iterations of public feedback were had. Now more recently, a very robust process, the park's master plan was held. And some specifics called out, some specifics were called out during that process, which I think were very much as the result of intentional engagement with the community. As a part of that process, some items, including the facility at Sandborne Park, really stood out as a priority. Again, calling out the importance of community engagement was a top priority. Certainly a lot of guidance provided through the PRF Commission and Council has been receiving updates throughout. As we fast forward to the process of understanding the time for the current building to go and looking forward to what the next steps might look like, staff, under the guidance of Mr. Basic, went out through an RFP process to understand that next step. To share with some folks, what we're looking to do here is to do abatement of the current facility and then set up, set us up with some design going forward. A lot of these items are outlined in the memo. If folks have questions, you can always give City Hall a call. We'd be happy to walk through. Do want to note that this doesn't commit a timeline or dollars to a facility in itself. Really it sets us up for that next step. I know we as staff and many of the neighbors are excited to move forward. So if there is concern as to what that timing might look like, there's no hard and fast time, but this does keep the motion going that we, we have been building upon here, really in the last couple of years. So staff's recommendation is to, as noted on your memo here, after going through the RFP process, award a not to exceed design for services contract with Alliance. That not to exceed amount is two hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And again, that middle paragraph under the recommendation calls out, and I'll say it again, important to note that this action does not authorize construction of a new building. The contract will initiate the design phase only, allowing for continued community engagement, refined planning and development of a building concept that reflects the priorities and feedback gathered through the Sandborne Park and Park's master plan process. With that, staff is happy to sit for questions, comments or concerns.
Comments? Questions?
I have one comment to make. Just that I know this went to an RFP process and we were choosing Alliance, but I do like that they're, they're recognized as a leader in sustainable architecture and have received a number of, or created a number of lead certified projects and basically just green architecture. So I'm, I'm happy to see that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I would just reiterate, you know, one of the super helpful documents that we have, the top goals and priorities, that gives us guidance for some of the decision-making. Again, with recreation staff, public works being engaged in the process, priorities are given to things like that as we go through it. So certainly appreciate the call out and continued guidance from Council.
Thanks. Okay. Was there a motion you made here?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Alliance.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, you are authorized to execute that agreement. Moving on. Here we are. All right, item B, under new business, resolution confirming the desire to rename Sandborne Park.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Really, I will look to Council for their feedback here. I'll set you up with a bit of history and where we're at. Going back to really even twenty twenty-three, the process was initiated to consider a renaming of Sandborne Park, as noted. Since it's something that hadn't been done in Robinsdale in some time, staff recommended a policy be established. The draft policy was considered, went before the PRF, went before Council. And the process was gone through and on the back end of the initial go-around, Council determined that it wasn't a process that they were willing to support, understandably so. They made a similar motion at the end of twenty twenty-four, the Bureau Prior Council establishing that desire. Now, fast forward to this spring, this council's had a similar discussion, expressed desire to do a renaming, but really wanting to start with the community-first feedback. Staff has taken feedback from those council work sessions here this spring and summer. We're in the process of putting some of those recommendations together. No hard dates have been established. But roughly, and in part to give us some time, we're looking at a mid-August to mid-September posting to get feedback from all community members. That gives us time to bring those to the PRF Commission. They would be able to refine as described in our most recent work session. And ultimately by your October work session, you'll have a stack of recommendations in front of you. We're, you know, wanting to move this quickly from last week's work session. Got a bit of guidance, looking to again have that support by way of the resolution. But certainly if there are questions on any of the guiding principles that we've discussed, happy to do that now. But as our understanding was, Council's priority was really to get this resolution approved, give staff the green light as they had described for that process to go forward and bring back those proposals here as soon as October. So with that, certainly no council has interest in sharing their perspective in the process. And following staff is happy to respond to questions, comments or concerns.
Okay, Council, what are your thoughts on the naming process? Would you like to go first? Councilmember Wagner.
Okay, thank you. I feel like I'm going first frequently. But yes, I think that this is great that we're talking about this again and that we are being intentional about it. And I also think that the resolution language is adequate for what our next steps are. And I guess I just want to thank the, the council for entertaining this. I want to thank the staff for preparing it. And I think we can, you know, I don't think we necessarily need to task ourselves with coming up with a policy. But following the, the guidelines and in the, in the memo, I think is, is good. And also, kind of just acting at the discretion of the council to, to come up with a, a name after hearing feedback, I think will be a good and, it will be good and fair and open for residents. And so I guess I just, yeah, I'm hesitant to maybe make up another park's naming policy. And I would rather just kind of go through and rename the things, rename the park ourselves without having extra kind of levels of red tape, for lack of a better term. So, yep, I support this and thanks.
So I understand, Tim, you're looking for us to provide feedback on the process. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, here tonight, if you have any items, the guidelines that are set forth in the memo here, happy to take those. The formal action, we're looking for approval of the resolution confirming the desire to move forward in the process.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you. Yes, I am very happy and proud to support this resolution to rename Sandborne Park. I think it's worth stating that the longstanding harm that those racially restrictive covenants in Robinsdale still echoes today. And by this resolution with the intention of renaming the park, we're acknowledging that history and choosing to move in a direction that's more inclusive and equitable. So with that, I also want to call out and thank former Mayor Bill Blonigan and especially the work of the Just Deeds Coalition. So in addition to supporting this resolution, I want to highlight some of the work that Just Deeds does and encourages. I would like to encourage folks to learn more about what they do and some of the educational opportunities they provide. Like, for example, the Mapping Prejudice Project. They've got a great website at justdeeds.org and there's an education section. So I encourage folks who may not be up to speed with where we are at this process and this decision to really do some background research and learn about the history of why this resolution has come to be. But with that, I'm very happy to support. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Graber.
Yep, I also, I'm in support of this resolution and appreciate all the conversations of staff and council to, to, to get a new process that involves the community and I think get things in the right order. So I'm in support of that as well. I will call out, I've, you know, long held the belief and have stated publicly that I don't think we should be naming parks after people. I know that that is one of the options included in here and I just want to say that I, I'm okay with that in the spirit of consensus as the rest of the council is in favor of that or as far as I understand. It's something that they support. So it's not something that I agree with, but I, I just, I know it's included. So and it's something that I want to support in general, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Blackledge, I see.
Yes, and I'll just say that I also support the resolution as well. And thank you to previous council for not only diving in, but I think recognizing the impacts and the importance of of how processes and names need to be done. But also, yeah, let's call out, we need to call out and be intentional, like make these shifts and changes in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then I'm going to ask an obvious question because I don't see it in here, so I assume it's not, so, but I know we talked about it. We're not requiring a petition process, right? We're just requiring people to submit names. So we're not going to make them jump through hoops.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we're going to make the process as easy as we can.
I love it. Great. That's awesome. Fantastic. Is there a motion?
I would love to move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Okay, we will rename that park. Moving on. Other business, voucher requests pending approval for dispersment. Any questions, comments there from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve dispersment request for the period ending July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, pay the bills. Next is the special work session, August nineteenth, six P M.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is the time where you take out your phones and look at your calendar. The last work session, we had suggested to keep on task or keep on our schedule for the budget discussions that we have. Friendly reminder, we're required by statute to submit a preliminary or not to exceed budget by the end of September. This special work session falls on an existing council night. The hope is that we can come in an hour early. Now with our guidance from our most recent work session, we're going to put together a draft and certainly some refining will happen in the next month. But we've got about, we've got a good amount of information that we can go forward with to present to you then. Certainly we'll have time between that point and the September, some more meetings is necessary. But we're asking you to set this special work session again, the nineteenth of August, six P M. That would be prior to your regularly scheduled seven P M meeting.
Excellent. Any concerns by council for that, that time?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Works for me.
All right, it's in the calendar. For me.
I will move that we set our special work session for August nineteenth at six P M at City Hall.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, August nineteenth, six P M. Put it in the calendars. Uh, next is administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll be real brief. We're at ten oh four. I want to note, as we do from time to time, the city's got a opening currently in the finance department. You saw a lot of fun finance things for those who stayed tuned until ten o'clock tonight. Certainly take a look at the city website or give us a call. Uh, certainly take a look at the city website or give us a call at City Hall, be curious, pull more information. Uh, won't run through all the upcoming events that we have, a lot of fun stuff coming up as we're just in the middle of summer. And then as I'm sure Council will want to offer my thanks, uh, the Whizbang Committee, a hundred percent volunteers, all the businesses, all the orgs, city staff that comes out, Council, the mayor, being present at Whizbang Days this past weekend. Um, such a fun, fun event, uh, we had, for the most part, very good weather. Um, it's fun to see people come together for a good reason and, um, all the positivity. And I get a kick out of that stuff as a longtime Parks guy, um, but, uh, in the specialty that, uh, the Robinsdale community is, um, so much fun to have, so I offer my thanks to all the aforementioned.
Thank you, Tim, um, all right, as Tim mentioned, it is 10:06, uh, Council, General Communications. Everybody want to go first?
Sure, sure, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, thank you to, as I stated earlier, just thank you to all the members of the public that came out tonight, uh, for whatever, um, issue was driving you here. Um, um, just thank for your inputs, it's really meaningful and important. And I'm glad that we have, um, such high civic engagement on, on, on things and, you know, I always wish it could be more, but I'll get what I can, or I'll take what I can, I can get. I just want to say thank you to everybody that showed up today. I also want to thank the Council for their, um, polite and, um, friendly discussion on matters in front of us today. I think that's, I mean, I, I, I think I've said it before, but it's just one of the reasons that I think it's just so easy being up here because, or I guess not easy, but like, it, it could be more difficult and it's not because of the way that, um, we respect each other and treat each other, um, because you can look, you don't have to look very far to find councils that are or other bodies of government that are not like that. And so I just want to, yeah, extend that to you all, just my sincerest thanks for keeping it, um, civil and on point. Um, I also want to thank everybody that came out to Whizbang Days and who volunteered and who made it a great weekend. It's always, you know, the big thing people look forward to every summer in Robinsdale and I'm, I'm just grateful that it still happens and it takes a lot of work for it to, to happen, so thank you to all who made that happen. And I guess, I think we're, we're gonna meet before National Night Out, but yeah, we're not meeting again until the Au- August 4th, so residents have a good rest of the July, uh, of July and I'll wrap it up there, thanks.
Excellent, um, Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, uh, I would love to be brief and just echo everything that Aaron has just shared, so I will leave it at that and a big thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Yeah, just similar, uh, to what Tim and Aaron said. Thanks to everybody that was involved tonight, um, and I'm glad that we can have, uh, a thoughtful discussion, even if we don't agree on everything. Um, and then, uh, want to just shout out Whizbang, everyone that's involved, it was already mentioned, but just, you know, it takes a lot of people to pull that off and, you know, lots of different parts of our city and the organization that, um, you know, all the volunteers that, that put on Whizbang Days. So, um, thanks to everyone that enjoyed it and thanks to all the people that did all the hard work to make it successful.
Excellent, Councilmember Blackledge?
Yeah, I'll echo that sentiment, uh, around Whizbang Days, um, amazing, um, experience, opportunity to walk this year and be a part of that, and I just appreciate the PRF for allowing me to walk in with them at, walk with them in the parade. And then, um, also to my councilmembers, um, I really just want to say I do appreciate, um, the discord that we had and, um, I think I do owe this to you as an explanation as to why, I mean, my decision. And part of that, um, I think a part reflection in real time, um, I'll offer that, Councilmember Parisian, giving your extensive tenure on the Council and also recognizing the cautionary tale, um, really stood out to me as far as how we approached things. And, um, I think as we've talked and discussed things, I've said, I want people to know, like, these are real, this, this happens in real time and we have to really be effective and intentional around that. And so I do want to say I do value all of you up here and really greatly appreciate, um, your input dialogue and the city as well too for the work that you do, um, and the looks behind the scenes, you don't see a lot of that, thank you. Tim and Chase for, for sure, for making sure that we have everything we need always, so.
True, and for keeping time.
Yes, yes, real talk, um, but yes, thank you, I appreciate you all and thank you for our community for showing up and being intentional.
Thank you, um, yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, we'll start off with the, uh, resolution. Um, I know a lot of work went into that with staff, I know RPD put some work into that too, getting, uh, everybody in the ready position. Um, for those that wished it would have gone another way, I know that we are going back to the drawing board, so to speak. I guess we're gonna look at maybe taking this back to a work session, we'll look at when it maybe can come back out, right? Um, so, um, so there's a lot of input, I've received a lot of input, uh, via email. And, uh, you know, it's one of those things that needs a, a bit more consideration and thought, so. So, um, so thanks for everybody for your time and investment in that robust discussion. Uh, Whizbang was amazing, was a really great year, uh, again, I just, like, it was one, so I'm new at being mayor, right? So, um, there's things that maybe mayors have traditionally done in the past and I wasn't there for that and I didn't know I was supposed to be there. So, you know, a little heads up in the past, you're saying, but, uh, it was, uh, it was a great, you know, it was just, I was so proud to be the mayor of Robinsdale. And, you know, I've always been proud to live in Robinsdale, but it's just, man, I gotta tell you, that was really something to, uh, to behold and it was a really great year, so, um, thanks to all the people who donated and got the fireworks going, so, um, what a wonderful week and we still have a lot of summer left in front of us, so don't feel like it's half over yet, so. Um, with that, um, I'd like to hear if there's a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no or nay, we adjourned.